We had, the city had special testing for essential employees of COVID-19. I am happy to report that the city employees are all safe. Safe route to schools. Chief Pelone and I are meeting with the school district and other stakeholders to discuss recommendations for the Safe Route to Schools grant. Our discussions including possible actions the city could take in anticipation since this grant funding may, will not take place until about the fall of next year. What is it the city can do now to help those, you know, for safety? I did, I'm happy to report and will reach again that the mask donation, anonymous donors gave the city of Gross Point Park and the other Gross Points, Harper Woods and areas hospitals KN95 masks. And so that was certainly some great news to hear. The Marina, as per the governor's orders, was opened as of May 1st, as well as the kayak launch at Patterson Park. We are in the process now of purchasing three U.S. Coast Guard approved marker buoys with solar powered lights for that section of seawall that's a little hard to see with the high water levels. We're looking into additional wood risers on the section of the main walkway in Pier Two and some finger piers in that section as well. If you've gone through Windmill Point, you may have seen installation of temporary safety fencing along the park perimeter in Marina to keep residents safe due to any high water levels that may be taken. And now on to the census, I'll give a report there. The city has been promoting the census through the city website, Facebook, and Constant Contact and Thanks in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. Take a look at your next water bill, you may have seen a reminder in there as well about filling it out. We currently, for comparison, we were at 43% as Gross Point Park on March 29th, and at the end of 2010, we were at 74%. As of April 28th, Gross Point Park has a response rate of 69%, so we're about 5% below what our current rate was. However, you still have an opportunity till July 14th to fill out your census. So I know I've talked with council and so as Assistant Manager Smith, if you can please share that information with fellow residents, it'd be appreciated. The census is really important. This is a way that, you know, is something that we're going to look at for the next 10 years for school district funding, city funding, state funding. So I highly recommend you fill out your census if you haven't done so. City Council, I'll be happy to report that you did receive a draft and I will be regarding rules of the city council and code of conduct. Within that document, you'll note that there is a purpose in there of this document, council manager form of government, what's the regular meetings, posting requirements for such meetings, setting an agenda, adding into facets like a consent agenda and additional public comment periods for the public, conduct committee assignments, public relations and such, including Robert's Rules of Order. Rocket fiber, prospective constructions to start near the end of the month or beginning of June, no exact date is in hand at this time. DTE is currently working with its contractors, Infra Source and Backer Landscaping, the finished landscaping that was unfinished from fall and winter of 2019. And for restoration concerns, please have residents call DTE at 313-270-9240. And at this time, the city is reviewing informational packet from DTE and will be posting that online for residents. Now to announcement I'm very proud to make right now. Due to COVID-19 and the economic impact it has had on the park, the city reached out and has had ongoing conversations with a representative for the Cotton family, which have led to various initiatives and to a relief due to COVID-19. This is our understanding with the Cotton family. They will continue to fund the Gross Point Housing Foundation and expanding their budget for the year to accept more doctors and residency programs at the local hospitals that move to the Gross Point Park rental district. Additionally, Gross Point Housing Foundation will continue to subsidize the rent for the student grantees for the next six months regardless of whether they are able to continue their enrollment in school due to COVID-19. The Gross Point Housing Foundation will evaluate at that time if there needs to be further program expansion. Continue their outreach to include teachers and Gross Point law enforcement that will move to the Gross Point areas and have children that will enroll in the Gross Point public schools. Item two, continued investment within the business district. The family has plans, they're continuing to move forward to provide a new children's bookstore within the former Bow Prey shop. In addition, seeking new tenants for the Fusion space on Kirchville right near Wayburn. Capital improvement planning is underway for the former barber shop at Lake Point and at Janet's Lunch. The bookstore and the capital improvements are estimated at construction cost of over $5 million investments. Number three, the family is working with its business tenants of their properties for relief and continued support due to COVID-19 and will continue review on a case by case basis. The family, point number four, the family has committed to providing funds for an electric charging station on Kirchville. And final, as more details arise, I'll share those with the public and city council and with sincere gratitude, thank the Cotton family for their generosity, care, and continued investment to the city of Gross Point Park. Mayor Denner, that is my manager's report.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Seisler. Does anyone have a question for the city manager regarding specific items on his report? Okay, seeing no hands, one hand, Councilmember Flut.
City manager, could you just repeat that DTE phone number for everybody, please?
One second, I may, let me, 313-270-9240.
And you're saying if residents have issues, they should contact DTE directly?
Yes, but if they're not getting any resolution, I thank you, you brought me up to another point, please let us know or the Public Works Department and we'll try and follow up with DTE as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Robson.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions for the city manager. Will the council be getting a hard copy of the code of conduct for the next council meeting?
I can, we can.
I would like one, but.
For any of council, I know typically much of our members enjoy electronic, but Jim, I will mail you a hard copy.
Thank you, sir. As a senior member, I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I would really like to express, I think we all do, tremendous gratitude for the announcement about the Cotton family. This is incredibly great news given the pandemic and what have you, but they've been a great blessing to our city and I certainly thank them.
Thank you, Jim.
I think this concludes the manager's report. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a special item, Gross Point Chamber of Commerce. I invited the president of the chamber, Jenny Betcher, to join our meeting today to give us an update. As most of you know, the Chamber of Commerce is a principal conduit for interacting with businesses across the Gross Points and President Betcher leads that organization. In the difficult times of the pandemic, the chamber has taken on special roles in funneling information to businesses regarding programs and also beginning to work on other programs for, as we begin to come out of the complete lockdown. With that, I'd like to thank President Betcher for joining us. She's on audio and I'd like her to address the council and give us a briefing on what the chamber's been up to and what we can expect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Denner and members of the city council for this opportunity to give this chamber update. Our local businesses continue to be challenged financially and mentally more than ever before and I want to assure you, the city, that the chamber is staying on top of local, state, and federal grant loan resources while also providing professional webinars and toolkits. These resources are being communicated through the chamber's website, eBlast, social media posts, print, and by phone calls. The resources acquired are from the Michigan Chamber, United States Chamber, Michigan.gov website, Wayne County Economic Development, SBA, DTE Foundation, the Community Foundation from Southeast Michigan, National Retail Federation, and other various resources. We're also using our communication platform to promote restaurant offering, curbside and pickup delivery, our retail offerings who are also offering curbside pickup and delivery, as well as our local markets. We're doing gift card giveaways through social media contests to encourage people to go online to shop and order food. We're also having virtual scavenger hunts and we're helping the salons and spas with promotion so that they can start scheduling hair appointments and spa appointments. Now to promote our nurseries, which is exciting, our gardening centers as they begin to open up as well. We are going to be providing reopening resources of where our members can find, or the businesses can find masks, shields, socially distant signage, measures, and et cetera. And then we've also been sharing the wide variety of interactive stories and posts that is promoting our community spirit, which I'm sure all of you have seen, in the Acts of Kindness, which has just been remarkable. If you're not following us on Facebook or Instagram already, I encourage you to follow us and like us and we will do the same for all of you. The chamber is offering Zoom meeting assistance so we can help the Village Association, the Hill Association, and Avenue in the Woods to keep their business-to-business communications open and host their meetings so that they're not missing a beat as well. We have postponed all of our community events until further notice, but as far as our networking events, which our members really rely on and love to have that interaction with one another, we've turned those virtually into Zoom, into our Zoom platform as well. And we're also going to be starting our learn-it lunches at the end of this month, which in the past, you know, we would provide lunch, but now we're encouraging our participants to purchase lunch from one of our restaurants before attending our Zoom meeting. So you'll be seeing all of that information coming out in our communications. And then last week on Friday, we put out a survey which was sent to the membership and tomorrow it's going to be going out on our social media feeds. We're trying to better understand the needs of our businesses and where we should be really focused. And I'll share you the results at the end of this week with all of you. But we know businesses are anxious to reopen their doors. To ensure the safety of our community and to help the businesses navigate the new normal, we're also creating a Gross Point is Open for Business Playbook. And this comprehensive guide will include many of the recommendations by the governor's Economic Recovery Force, along with guidelines from CDC and other federal, state, and local agencies. And this resource will be a living document, which we will be updating as the situation continues to change. And we will also share that, obviously, with all of you as well. And lastly, I know Nick had already touched on the census that we are, continue to promote, but I thought I would give you an update as of today. Participation from Gross Point Park is at 75%. 2010, Gross Point Park's participation was 74.8%. So we are definitely moving in the right direction and I hope that we continue to increase this response. That's my report.
Thanks, Jenny, that was good. You didn't mention a couple of things that I thought were worth you touching on. One is that I believe the chamber's been working pretty closely with the county on some of their programs and I know that you participated in their grant program, you might want to touch on that. And then also the county, I think, has a current task force that's active on getting back to work. You might want to comment on both of those.
Well, so we assisted Wayne County with their grant applications. They had such an overwhelming amount of applications, they needed help so that they could get the money dispersed. And so we worked with them on their scoring process. We did over 100 businesses. And Gross Point Park had, I think they had like six or seven businesses that were awarded grants, which, you know, unfortunately, everybody can't get the grant money, but at least quite a few did. So we're happy to be able to assist in that. And then what was your other question?
I believe there's a recently formed task force on getting back to work or something like that and I think you're participating in that, but I might be wrong there.
And are you, through Wayne County?
Through the county, yeah.
Yes, yes, we are. They just recently started a task force to help businesses reopen and that just started last Friday, so we're happy to participate in that. And what we're going to be doing is resources so that there's one, there's one site that businesses can go and find all the resources they need to reopen, from marketing to, you know, helping the, helping the staff, the employees, train them to be in a safe circumstance and et cetera.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks a lot. Councilors, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. I see that Councilmember Relon has a question or comment for you.
Hi Jenny, good to hear from you. That's a wonderful program you have going on. I have a question regarding the reopening of businesses. Do you have any hospital systems that you partner with to set up, not just reading the CDC guidelines, but how to guide a business properly opening with social distancing and signage and things like that?
Yes, so Henry Ford is actually going to be the hospital that we're going to be working with. And so I'm waiting to get a report from them that will be included in all of our information.
Okay, so I'm on that team as well from Henry Ford that we're reaching out. We've been concentrating on Detroit, but I told them I'd reach out to Gross Point Park. But now that I have the Chamber of Commerce with you involved, I'd love to partner with you. We're going to be creating a little check sheet, checklist for people and then those that actually want to go to get a deeper dive if they have a bigger facility, we can help with signage as well as getting some clinical experience, expertise in there to guide them on reopening safely. So I'll reach out to you after this meeting, we can connect, but that's good to hear. That's, my health system's helping out that way, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you. Jenny, I was just going to comment that now might be a good time to offer trial or discounted memberships to businesses that aren't part of the chamber to, so they can avail themselves of their, of your resources and you can grow your base. Might be a good time to do that now. Many may not want to add the expense, but if you, if you offer them an opportunity to at least have a trial membership, it might work for both organizations.
Thank you. We actually are offering that where they could join, they don't have to pay now, they can pay later. And as far as our membership goes as well, we realize, you know, how critical this time is right now, so we are doing membership referrals and, you know, we're not going to terminate anybody. This is such an important time right now. We just want to be here to support everybody the way that we can.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Robson.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, quick question, review on what you mentioned, the Wayne County Grant Program for businesses. Is that still open or is that passed or how does that work?
I believe that is closed. That happened last month.
Okay.
And the businesses, but were able to apply for grants and there was different criteria to be able to acquire.
Yeah, I may have a little bit more information on that, although I'm not 100% current. In last week's county call, I believe, and I don't have my notes in front of me, they indicated that the, there are still some grants available, at least there were at that time. And also, it was important to note that their initial criteria was broadened out quite a bit in the later stages of the reviewing of the grant. So to the extent that Jenny, we have businesses that feel like they might want to pursue that option, at least as of last, beginning of last week, there were, there was some money available still in that program. Okay, Councilmember Hodges.
Mayor Denner, that prompts the thought as well to remind businesses that through the CARES Act and round two of the stimulus funding, I understand that there's still payment protection program, or paycheck protection program money still available. So businesses may want to look into that and work with their financial institutions to apply for those dollars, a portion of which can be forgivable or at least low to no interest loans. And Jenny may have more.
Yeah.
Up to date report on that.
Okay, excellent. Okay Jenny, thanks so much for joining us. That was really a good, very good update on some, you know, incredibly important information in the times that we are having. I'd like to congratulate the chamber for stepping up and taking a leadership role with our business community. A little plug for the progress over the last several years. The chamber under your leadership has really grown their relevance to the business community with the programs that you've been pursuing over the last several years and I think are proving the importance of a strong chamber during these difficult times. So thank you very much and thank you to the chamber and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, appreciate it and council.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Tifa Board appointment. By way of introduction, I think it was two months ago, council approved new bylaws for our Tifa Board, our Tax Incentive Finance Authority Board, which invests the economic development of our Northwest Sector, essentially the first four streets of our city with the exception of the businesses fronting Jefferson. When we approved those bylaws, they included a specific number of board members to be appointed, which fell within the range that was specified in the state statute, not at the bottom, not at the top. We were one short at that time and I'm pleased to say that I have someone that I would like to propose to appoint to the board this evening. The proposal is for a two-year term, so with, and the terms normally expire in October. So the definition of a two-year term under those circumstances would be the completion of this year till October and then all next year until October of 2021. Normally it would be a four-year term, but one of the other things that we adopted in the revised bylaws is to establish staggered terms and to the extent possible, keep those terms evenly distributed across the, across the board. So this is for a two-year term and begins the process of getting us into more staggered terms and compliance with the intent of those bylaws. So I, with that, I would move that we, to, well, let me introduce Marcia Pharaoh by her resume and I'm, formal motion on the floor. Marcia's an eight-year resident of Gross Point Park. She has a unique background, particularly in the Tifa District. Not only is she now a homeowners resident of the Tifa District on Wayburn, but she also has had experience on Kirchville and on Mac. On Kirchville, she was the pastor of the church, which eventually became what we now know as Atwater Brewery. And then when the congregation decided to sell that property, she was pleased that it was going to be developed and used and moved on with her ministry and established her ministry in a coffee shop and a coffee shop on Mac at Nottingham. Both that church and the coffee shop are within the Tifa District, as is Marcia's residence. So with that, I believe, I believe that she would be an excellent addition to the board. Many of you may know her from being around town and that I move that we approve the appointment of Marcia Pharaoh to the Tifa Board. Is there support?
High support.
Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Reed.
I just have a couple of questions really about the process. Did the administration publish the Tifa opening and set a deadline for submitting applications?
There was, we, I'll let the city manager respond specifically. We didn't have any specific deadline, I don't think, but city manager?
No, Mayor Denner, we did not have any specific deadline.
Okay, and I know that Ms. Pharaoh, and I know, I know her and she's great, I just, I noted that her application is dated April 28th of 2020, so is that when it was submitted?
Yes. That's when we received it.
Okay, and do you know about how many applicants there were?
I had at least a half a dozen or more to consider.
And is everyone's application acknowledged? I just want to make sure residents who are interested get some kind of acknowledgement.
I'm not sure if we've touched with, touched base with everyone, but I'll ask the administration to follow up with our file of applicants that are not in the, are not Marcia Pharaoh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Hodges.
Mayor Denner, thank you. I'm happy to support this appointment and respect your authority in providing that. I would like to reach out to, or just extend a hand to my colleagues and yourself as we look to the fall, when additional appointments will be necessary so that we can be strategic and collaborative in identifying people who can really add to our skillset, help to rebuild trust, ensure compliance, and other things that I think the community is calling for. So with that, I would call the question unless there's other discussion.
I think, I think you just told some of my remarks after we have the vote, but I'm going to, I'm going to make a few of them anyway along those lines. So anyone else before we call a question? Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Granal?
Yes.
Relan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Flut?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Along the lines of what Councilmember Hodges began to inform us about, we do have five of the current board members whose terms are ending in October of this year. That's unusual because of the fact that we did not have staggered terms up to this point. So the appointments that I, that will be made in October will be to continue to establish staggered terms and with the, with the appointments in October, we will, we will be in full compliance with having staggered terms going forward. So they won't all be, won't all be appointed for the same number. It's also important to note then that everyone that submitted an application in the current process will be in the file for consideration in October. And we have between now and October to encourage others who may be interested to submit their application. So I think that we have a real strong application file now and I would expect that it might only get stronger between now and October. And I wanted to announce the fact that there will be some appointments. Obviously, some of the incumbents will want to stay and should stay, but it's, it's likely in a board such as this that there will be some turnover and I would like to make sure I've got a strong applicant file when we get there. Okay, thank you. Next we get to public hearing on the Tifa amended development plan. Let me give you a little bit of background on this, not so much for council, but for everyone else that's here at the hearing. In December, this council voted to push ahead with relocating our DPW from the current facility on Jefferson, which is old and tired and actually in some, in some ways not so safe, to a new facility to be located on Mac Avenue between Wayburn and Maryland. With that in mind, council, administration took the direction of council and began that process. That included the Tifa Board. One of the conditions in the December vote was that the, that the new DPW project would be funded through the tax recapture of the Tifa. So to that end, that triggered a series of steps. One of the steps was to evaluate the current, the development plan for Tifa that was in place and that's what we'll be talking about in a minute. Also, the Tifa proceeded on the, on the process of the project, project steps to enable the movement of, or the building of a new DPW facility. One was to acquire some property that was also part of what we were encouraging them to do in our motion. And the second was they began the design process by retaining an architect who is well into design. Now, the development plan was evaluated and while the proposed DPW is well within the statute and arguably could be read into the current, the development plan that was in place, with the advice of bond council and the act of participation of our, of our legal team on the bond side, a, an amendment was developed to be more, primarily to be more specific about the DPW project. And that is the focus of, of the amendment. The Tifa Board has reviewed the amendment, the board that we just added Marcia Pharaoh to, and they have approved it and formally approved it and forwarded. it and forwarded a copy of their resolution to Council for a public hearing and consideration of Council for our approval. In the statute, it provides for when an development plan is established or amended, public hearing is to take place. And in a moment, I'll open the public hearing as it relates to this proposed amended plan. And I also want to make sure that everyone understands that this is only one step in the public process. So this is, this is a public hearing about the amended plan, and the purpose of a public hearing is exactly that, is to hear the public. But there are additional public steps that will have to be completed related to the DPW project. In addition to the hearing today, the Public Service Committee has committed to hold a meeting chaired by Councilmember Granow to evaluate, not evaluate, but to review the plans for the new DPW facility and the overall need and, and hopefully operating efficiencies that we all expect with a new facility. That, that will be a public meeting yet to be scheduled, but I've talked to Councilmember Granow, and he'll be working on that shortly. There will also be a, a planning commission meeting where the site plans are reviewed with the planning commission by, by the, by the design team and for feed, public feedback and feedback of the planning commission. That also is yet to be scheduled and is contingent on the progress of the design team, which I would guess is going to occur sometime in June, based on the feedback I've gotten about the progress of the design. They want to get it far enough along to be able to satisfy all the normal requirements of a, of a planning commission meeting. And then finally, going back from the physical steps, from the physical construction to the financing side of it, once we have a, we still must then approve the amended development plan. And once we have an approved plan, the Council will be asked to authorize the issue of a bond. So it will be a resolution that comes before Council in the future to issue a bond. The two main requirements for issuing that bond will be the approved development plan and also reasonable, and also new or current construction estimates. So that, so there's a basis for the, a final basis for the amount of the bond that is to be offered. So these are all the steps that were triggered really by vote in December, December. And this is just one step along that, along that class, that path. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing for consideration of the amended Northwest Tifa Development Plan and ask our Assistant to the City Manager to help manage the public comment portion of that, as this will be managed much like public comment of any of other meetings. They include, can include both, will include both written comments that were submitted and also verbal comments that are to be provided this evening. So with that, Assistant to City Manager Smith, can you help us with the process?
Sorry, I just needed. Yes. So what's going to happen is City Manager Seisland is going to read.
I'm sorry, we've got serious, we've got serious echoing feedback happening when you're speaking. So there's someone nearby there that's creating an echo.
Okay. Give me one second.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I'll just do this. So what's going to happen is City Manager Seisland is going to read all of the written comments that were submitted. Then we are going to move into a queue list. If you would like to be added to the queue for the Tifa public hearing at this moment, what you need to do is either use the raise hand function or write in the chat box that you have a public comment. If you are on the phone and not using the app, you need to press star nine, and I will add you to the queue list. Once the written comments have been read, I will call on you by either your screen name in the app or by the last four numbers of your telephone. City Manager Seisland, if you would like to read the written comments, please.
Thank you, Leah. Much appreciated. Mayor Danner, I do want to note too, in case there's further discussion, Dale Kraniac is on the line, Dennis Lavasser, and Jim Odell, the Chair of the Tifa Board. So I'm going to, I'm going to read standard to how we do public comment in Council meetings. I'm going to read the name, and then I'm going to read the email. And these emails were either submitted through Leah Smith through a public comment period and/or through the public notice that was sent to Clerk Blighut. Following comment comes from Kevin. I'm in writing in support of the proposed new DPW building. The need for a new DPW building is not in question, as the present one does not meet OSHA standards. Moving it to the northwest corner of the city solves several issues, solves the blight issue in that area, giving us an impressive design that serves as a cornerstone for community. It will be able to accommodate all DPW equipment, removing the need to have some sort of it stored at Windmill Point Park. Moving the DPW building from its present location facilitates moving forward with the proposed art center. Please do not let objection to the art center project cloud the sound DPW proposal. That is submitted comment one. Submitted comment two by Megan. I am in support of moving the public works facility to Mac Avenue between Wayburn and Maryland for the following reasons, in bullets. The Mac commercial location is highly suitable for this use. The new modern structure will create a much-needed positive and stabilizing presence on the northwestern border of our city. May encourage others to improve their properties along the Mac corridor. Presence of city employees and vendors will positively impact surrounding businesses. A modern facility will benefit from decreases in energy usage and increases in operational productivity. The bond for the project will be funded by the Tifa Tax Authority. Moving the public works facility frees up the current public works location along our Jefferson gateway, making way for a better use. Lastly, the Council has already voted six to nothing in support of moving the DPW to this location, and I applaud this action. That was comment two. Comment three comes from Carol, to whom this may concern. The proposed amendment to design and construct public works offices along Mac Avenue between Wayburn and Maryland comes at a poor time. I do own property at Maryland and find a lack of essential services in public works. What was once maintained is no longer maintained in reference to the sewer lines going down the alleys plus the alleys themselves. When was the last time you took a serious look at the condition of the right-of-way? Where is that in the city budget? I'm sure you will be quick to point out there is no money for that. This all boils down to priorities, and my priorities remain in public services for tax dollars spent. Clean out our sewer lines the way you did in the past. I don't need a new building and more tax dollars spent or imposed when the economy will be reeling in debt for the next year or two. Next comment. Now, this comment comes from Kathleen. I'm not necessarily against the art center nor a DPW building, but I believe the process has fallen far short in the planning process. I am also concerned as to why this point, while going through a global health crisis, this is even a concern at the moment. There might be more pressing issues of concern to deal with that better serve our time and money and truly help our community. Please consider these issues before going forward. Comment here from Eric. I am writing to express my desire to have the old Verdunx building developed, and I support the relocation and construction of the proposed DPW facility and support the new art center as well. I live at 1050 Beacons Field. This comment comes from Neem. I am a property owner in the Tifa District. I support the relocation and construction of the proposed DPW facility. I am concerned with the current DPW building being a health and safety hazard to the employees. The abandoned Verdunx Bakery Building at Maryland and Mac has been abandoned for years. It is unsightly and has negatively impacted the nearby residential area and businesses along Mac Avenue. That entire block has become blighted. The proposed DPW facility is nicely designed and will enhance the Mac Avenue Business District and increase local property values. Also, a new state-of-the-art facility will greatly improve the daily operations of the Public Service Department. I would also like Councilmembers to know that many are pleased with the walkable and vibrant business district and would love the progress to continue. Good afternoon. My name is Emily. My husband Jim and I moved into Gross Point Park with our two children in 2003, and over the course of the years, we have been very pleased with the way the community has grown. We understand that the Council will be voting on a new public service facility in the upcoming meeting. We are in favor of this upgrade as it continues the continuity of growth in the area while providing a much-needed facility. Mac Avenue between Wayburn and Alter has been neglected for far too long. Adding the bank on the corner has given it new life, and adding GPP's new public service building, there will be a great addition. This comment comes from Larry. I am a longtime property owner in GPP and support the relocation and construction of the proposed DPW facility. The abandoned Verdunx Bakery at Maryland and Mac has been abandoned for years. It is unsightly and has negatively impacted the area and businesses along Mac Avenue. That entire block has become blighted. The proposed DPW facility is nicely designed and will enhance the Mac Avenue District and increase our local values. A new state-of-the-art facility will greatly improve the daily operations of public works. This comment comes from Joseph. I wish to voice my support for the relocation of the public works buildings and operations to the location at Mac and Maryland. As a Detroit-to-Gross Point Park transplant, I have seen the progress made by Detroit in the rejuvenation of the Jefferson Avenue and Mac Avenue approaches to Alter Road with new buildings, renovating old buildings, increased retail and business space. I recall the days when these spaces were vacant and dangerous. As a park resident, I now see the approach from the GPP side, and it is kind of embarrassing. While buildings have been demolished, vacant lots, empty buildings, and the unsightly and outdated public works facility are what welcomes people to our community. A new environmentally friendly and energy-efficient facility at the Mac Avenue location would bring life to a dying corner of the city and provide an injection of life to Mac. And the removal of the unsightly old facility in Jefferson would enable an improved and welcome approach to our beautiful city. Our city council unanimously supported this plan, and I hope we can move forward as a team to join them in this plan to bring progress and improvement to our side of Alter. This comment comes from Richard. I hope that you move forward with the proposed new DPW building and the art center. The old DPW building has been obsolete and inefficient for a while. I know that the new building will make the daily workings of the city much more efficient and economically, providing our workers a safe and positive work environment. I have known quite a few of the employees over the last 37 years of living here, and I know that the current structure has seen its day. I know that it is time to build a new, efficient, safe structure for these young people to work and feel comfortable in. I also hope that the city moves forward with the proposed art center. How lucky are we that kind, generous citizens are willing to donate millions of dollars to enhance our quality of life here in the park? The art center would be such a welcoming structure to see as people enter our fine city. And final, one final written comment. And this comment comes from Michael. Thanks for bringing to my attention what is happening with the new proposal for relocating the DPW building through the public notice I received. I am a Realtor with Sign &amp; Monahan in Gross Point Farms, as well as a Director on the Gross Point Board of Realtors. My wife and I own 1474 Wayburn, which is the first non-vacant duplex in GPP east of Mac. We are very excited about this new proposal. We actually own three duplexes in GPP, and I've lived in the park most of my life. I think this relocation will be beneficial to the area in many ways. First of all, the border of Mac definitely needs a facelift. This new building will provide that as well as an anchor that I feel is much needed for resident foot traffic, as well as blocking off the unsightly commercial and residential structures that are not being maintained across Mac. This relocation will also clean up the entry on Jefferson, which I feel is very beneficial to the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood. Property values have been climbing in the park, which benefits everyone. I have personally been involved with multiple rehab residential projects in all the points, but mostly in the park. Personally, I prefer to do rehabs, in quote flips, in the park, because not only do I live here, but I want to help raise the values to benefit this district. I feel this new proposal is a much-needed rehab that will help do the same with raising home values to benefit all park residents. I hope this project will move forward. Mayor Danner, that is all the written comments I have regarding the amended development plan.
Thank you, City Manager. Assistant City Manager, City Manager Smith, I think we should have the verbal comments at this time. I think--
Can I ask one question before we move on? Could I just ask City Manager Seisland, were their last names included with each of those? And, or didn't you just neglected or chose not to share those, or were they all submitted without last names?
Oh, no. They had the last names on it. I just had the first name.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just to add to that, our rules require public comment to include last names, especially in this situation where we can't even see the person speaking. I think you need to--
City Manager, maybe you could run back through and provide the last names with each comment.
Yes. Yeah, no, I can do that. Carol Esker, Kevin Rasmussen, Megan Hughes, this one's just Kathleen, Eric Goosen, Neem Fama, Emily Robson, Larry Coles, Joseph Warren, Richard Schroeder, and Michael Fawcett. Those are all the names.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the verbal of the, of the meeting.
Okay. So the one thing I did forget to mention is I will be showing a three-minute timer on the screen. So if you are speaking, please pay attention to that timer. When you hit three minutes, we will thank you for your comment and mute you. The first public comment is going to be from Mary. So if you'll give me one second, I will unmute you. And Mary, you are, well, I've unmuted you. Can you try to mute yourself, please?
Leah, you still have the echo on your end.
Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Mary Rulo. I'm a resident of the Tifa on Lake Point Street. I'm a very strong supporter of our local businesses, and I've tried to double down on this during this COVID crisis. If they don't do well, neither does the park, especially my neighborhood. I have two points about the issue really at hand tonight, the proposed development plan, I'd like to briefly discuss. First, it's not a strategic development plan, but instead merely a retrofit to insert the DPW building. Second, it is not the result of any organized and thoughtful public input process from either businesses or residents. With regard to the first point, a true economic development plan would, for example, include a plan for ongoing assessment of business needs and strategies to address them. It might look at how to enhance our walkability asset or fill vacancies. It could include a robust marketing strategy to attract new businesses. It should reflect a review of available programs and design concepts. Gross Point, for example, is a redevelopment-ready community program as defined by the Michigan Economic Development Commission. And most of all, it should be much more specific in its goals, strategies, and expected major uses of money. We do have examples from other communities that we should review, like the specificity of the plan from how, for example, we can do better. With regard to the second point, to the best of my knowledge, other than some, some type of informal outreach to Tifa Board members by Dale, no formal surveying of our business community has been done in developing the plan. As a Tifa resident, I know that my neighborhood has not been solicited, nor have other park residents. This is especially unacceptable, given the number of park residents who have expertise in planning and development. Other communities have actively sought out business and resident input in crafting their plans. In Harrison, for example, a district-wide survey monkey was administered, as well as bimonthly meetings during the drafting phase. Mr. Mayor, I have eight documents that I would like to submit in support of my testimony. How should I do this? Thank you. How should I do this? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Vosberg, you are going to be next. So give me one second, I will unmute you. Hey, please go ahead.
Thank you, um, Mayor and council members for your time this evening and for the work that you've been putting into this. I had sent an email to all the council members expressing my thoughts about the Tifa, um, plan, and my concerns with it, considering the current economic situation we were, we are, find ourselves in. And it's quite a bit different from when the Tifa plan was originally approved by the Tifa board. I, in reviewing it in detail, I note that the Tifa plan projects a 2% inflation factor annually for the plan. This is about double what most Tifa plans, particularly those that are going to be seeking bond financing or any sort of financing using Tifa funds for support use. So that, that is in a, a rising economy. We are entering, obviously, uncharted waters, almost certainly, as a sharp decline economically for all communities. And I question whether these projections are sufficient, given the, the large change that we have seen in just two months' time in our community. And so we are going to be tying the city's hands for 15 years for a bond that is supposed to be supported by Tifa projections that were already overly robust, seem to be certainly too robust in these times. And, you know, I, I just think that this is not a, a good time to be taking out a bond for this. Nor do we know where the construction market is heading for this. It's not looking like construction costs are going down any, anytime soon from their 30% annual inflation rate, which the Detroit market has been seeing for the past several years. I really think the council should pause this and take some time to reevaluate this and see where the economy and where construction costs and the like are headed. I can lose my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Danner, I have no more public comment in the queue.
Say that, I'm gonna unmute myself. I noticed that all the council is muted at the moment. Okay, so that, uh, just to confirm.
Yes, I have no, oh, I have one more, sorry, his hand just raised. Um, Mr. Kohler, I'm going to unmute you. And then I will start the timer. Give me one second, please. Okay, you are unmuted. If you would like to go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much, Leah, and everybody. I wasn't planning on making a comment, but hearing, uh, everything here over the last 10 to 15 minutes, you know, and my comment is not for or against the DPW, but rather the entire process here. And what I'm concerned about as a resident is that for years, the multiple facilities of the DPW that were in need of major upgrades was never a major concern, at least enough where a concern was raised that a redevelopment effort was ever considered by our tax authority. Instead, last fall, if I'm looking at the meeting minutes here, it was noted for the first time that options were being discussed. And then shortly thereafter, the mayor and the city manager were touting this new building to be built without any public comments, let alone any prior recommendations that were voted on by the authority. And this process can't be anything else just simply other than broken. Uh, and it's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, at this time, I still have no other public comment waiting.
Confirming that there are no other public comments. I close this public hearing for consideration of the Northwest Tifa amended development plan. Now, next steps.
Can I add some public comments, Mayor? Sorry to interrupt you. I have about 10, 10 emails that I'd like to read for public comment. Thank you.
Right of order from the city attorney?
Yeah, no, I, if they were not submitted per the procedures, I don't think it's appropriate that you read those.
Okay, what about Greg Donnelly's that was submitted to Ms. Leah Smith that wasn't read?
I, I, I don't, I'm not looking.
I'll read them on my time, though, when it's my time for discussion.
I also don't, frankly, I don't think that's appropriate. I think it circumvents the policy.
If you don't know, I, I'm, the thinking part of it, I'm not really concerned about. If you can follow that, otherwise I'm gonna do it.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch that because you interrupted me. You said because I used the term "think" that you're not gonna follow what I'm trying to offer as guidance to the city attorney. Did I, did I get that right?
Yes, you did.
All I can do is give you advice.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to talk about where we go from here and the process forward. As many of you noticed, we've got a number of things yet on the agenda this evening, including an important consideration of the budget, a few other items. And as the meeting is likely to go long, that's one factor. And also because a good deal of information was, uh, was presented in the comments from the public hearing, and also the plan itself is quite a little bit in it. I would like to suggest that rather than trying to drain our discussion this evening and come to a conclusion that we digest what we, what we know, what we've heard, and, uh, consider, um, consider the, uh, the amendment at a future meeting, where we would be in a position to then, if necessary, amend the plan and, and then hopefully ultimately approve it. So with that in mind, my motion would be to defer action on discussion and adoption of the plan until, uh, to, to the June regular council meeting. So give us plenty of time to do additional, uh, consideration for all of it and be able to take, have a reasoned discussion and a reasoned decision come June. If we act in a timely fashion in June, I've talked to the design team, and they believe that that will support the, uh, the process staying on schedule, assuming approval, to be able to, uh, to pursue construction in this construction season. So with that, I do move that we defer a discussion and action to our regular, regularly scheduled June meeting on June 8th next month. Your support?
Support.
I'm not supporting.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Several of you are muted, so you may want to, uh, discussion, um, if there's a, okay, council member Reed.
Um, yes, I have quite a bit of discussion, uh, Mayor Danner. Um, I probably, like many of my colleagues, spent most of my weekend talking to residents and responding to emails on this Tifa plan. And I have prepared comments that I, um, that I'm going to state now. And several emails that we all received were asked to be read into the record. And my phone is blowing up with residents who expected their comments to be read. So I may use some of my time to read that, but here goes. "Time is not of the essence here. We have experienced a paradigm shift since March 15th of this year. Every resident has been affected by the pandemic, some more than others. Many of our residents, especially in the Tifa district, are facing the loss of their livelihood. We owe it to them to approve a comprehensive plan. I am not against moving the DPW to Mac. In fact, we voted unanimously to do so with certain parameters in December 2019. I am not against an art center. Neither the art center nor the DPW facility are time-sensitive projects, and we are not under any contractual obligation to move forward. Under the October 2019 agreements, we are not obligated to convey the properties until we have received written notice that the URIF has sufficient funding to convince, to commence development, and then we have 90 days. Had the city been able to purchase and occupy Joe's Garage for its DPW, we would not be considering this amended development plan. As an aside, I am troubled by the Joe's Garage debacle. Some historical content, context is warranted. On January 9th, 2017, prior to my service and that of three other council members, the council voted to negotiate a lease for Joe's Garage. We used it and made improvements without ever executing a lease. Then, on October 28th, 2019, the council approved a purchase agreement and a land contract which included Joe's Garage. We apparently did not do our due diligence before presenting those agreements, as it was later determined that we could not move forward with the Joe's Garage purchase. I presented a list of questions at the time of that vote, which could not be answered, and I voted no. Now, here we are in the middle of a pandemic, pandemic, with so much uncertainty as a city, state, and nation. We are pretending that all is well and that it is imperative that we approve this plan because somehow a DPW facility that will not create new jobs will spur economic development. I will not vote for an inadequate Tifa plan that does not fully address the needs of the district and is not based on our master plan because that was rejected. The narrow focus on everything related to the art center is making us blind to the needs of all of our residents. I have asked our DDA and Tifa director and our city attorney to review the Recodeified Tax Increment Finance Act to determine how we can assist our businesses and residents in the Tifa district. Many other cities are exploring these options. I have spoken with Christine Rader, a park resident and senior VP for Growth and Development at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I understand they are working with the governor and the state legislature on these issues. We all received her email, and I think we should take heed of her wide counsel, wise counsel. The DDA and Tifa have flown under the radar for far too long. Internally, I began raising various concerns about state law compliance and best practices in June 2019. I was distressed to learn at last week's budget workshop that the DDA incurred an additional $50,000 in legal and permit fees. Those fees relate to the July 2019 Memoranda of Understanding, which included the construction of the bus turnaround in front of City Hall. At the time of that vote, I inquired as to cost. We did not have estimates. Some on council commented that it must be $50,000 because that was the amount of the performance bond. I voted no, among other reasons, because of the lack of detailed information. It turns out that it was over $100,000. Today, today, the former city attorney and Tifa director admitted that we are not in compliance with state statute. There is no excuse for this, and that alone is reason to reject the proposed amended plan. Further, at that Tifa meeting, the participants and the board members were advised that the bond issuer, issuer is requesting that the bond be backed by the full faith and credit of the city. And in these uncertain economic times, we cannot be assured that the Tifa will be able to support this bond. I'm also concerned that the Tifa director is now working for free. Where is the accountability? Here, I will echo Christine Rader's comments. And I'm quoting her. "I don't know of any unpaid DDA Tifa directors unless there is a serious financial issue and/or it's integrated into their duties with other titles. There is an expectation that a modern municipal management team would include a paid professional to run the DDA Tifa. A paid professional would be accountable to the city council, the city manager, and ultimately us, the taxpayers. Making this a volunteer position for the next 18 months or so seems to me to lack accountability and transparency. I am disappointed in the lack of any real information on the city website with the DDA Tifa minutes or board packets. It appears the board only meets two to three times a year, when most around the state meet monthly. I saw in minutes late last year that the next meeting would be in January 2020, but there were no minutes or agenda listed for the January meeting. Now there's a, a rush special meeting to make the timing for the budget. None of this managed to leave many of us residents wondering what is driving all of this. We are paying attention, and we deserve better."
Okay, um, I think that some of those comments probably could be clarified by, uh, by the administration, possibly the, uh, Tifa legal support.
Yeah, I, I don't really need clarification. I've spent a lot of time on this, um, Mayor Danner. I, I'm, I'm very upset about this process and really the lack of, of understanding and forethought that we're, we're having right now in this pandemic. I, I was on a Zoom call with family yesterday. My niece in Manhattan, they're telling her she's not going back to work in 2020. My nephew in Madrid, not till October. Another nephew in Washington DC, not till September. I mean, these are unprecedented times, and we're pretending like nothing's happening.
I, I understand that. There were, there were two comments that you made that I thought were worth clarifying, but we can come back to that.
Point of, point of order? The motion on the floor is to adjourn the hearing until, or adjourn our deliberation until June. I don't think it's proper to have comments that are substantive debate until the, until we decide this motion.
I think that's probably fair that we should, uh, we should decide to adjourn it to June, or we should decide to, uh, to exhaust comments for as long as it takes tonight. So there is a motion on the floor. Uh, Councilmember Relon, do you have something?
Yes, first, I want to say sorry to Mr. Howlett. My problem is not with you at all. I was upset about the process of an agenda being posted on Friday afternoon with 48 hours for our residents to get there by 5 o'clock with their comments. That is not transparent at all, and that's, that's a bad process again. Uh, I was a part of the DDA meeting today at 2, which was scheduled haphazardly, again at 4 o'clock with a Tifa meeting, and then for this. I think there's more than more discussion we need to have for this, and I, I will not be reading the emails tonight, but I will be making sure we all understand the discussion that's going on. I thank you, uh, Councilmember Laurie, for saying those, those words. I was gonna read Christine Rader's emails while it was very set, stepped back as well. Uh, Mary Rulo's comments were very eye-opening as well. During the Tifa meeting, there was a lot of comments that let us know that that budget was not presented to that team. So that Tifa board is not a board. It is Dale and Dennis. They are running the Tifa. Everyone on that Tifa board, maybe, maybe Chairman Odell was part of that, but everyone was asking questions like they never saw that budget before. Last week, on Thursday, Dale tried to push that budget through. He lied to us, saying that it was round robin approved by that board. So this whole Tifa board is out of order, and that's, that's what I want to mention. I think we need a whole sit-down with them, maybe talk to, talk to our new city attorney, Howlett, to get them into shape, because it, it's completely out of order. It's, it's illegal, as, as Councilmember Laurie read.
Let's, uh...
Thank you.
You made some assertions there that are probably not valid, but I'd ask our city attorney to comment.
Yeah, no, and, and, and thank you for saying that, Councilman Relon. The, and obviously, I don't have a, a problem with you. Um, I'm just trying to do the best I can, like all of us are. Um, I, I do think Councilmember Granow's statement is highly relevant, which is there's a motion on the floor right now to adjourn, and I think, um, discussion, focus, and a vote should be made out of that, which I, which is, I understand, is adjourning the discussion we're getting into now later date and not making any substantive decision on, um, some of the issues that have been presented today. But, um, I, I do think as a matter of order, there should be taken in that motion because it's sitting on the floor now.
Okay, um, with that, with that bit of advice, it would appear that we need to dispose of the, uh, of the motion. So, uh, Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Excuse me, I need support for that motion.
I'm sorry, let me clarify the motion. The motion is to, is a motion to defer discussion and approval of the Northwest Tifa amended development plan to our regular council meeting scheduled for June 8th.
That's correct. And I just need the, who's supporting your motion?
I supported it.
Yeah, Councilmember Granow supported it.
Okay, okay.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Granow?
Yes.
There's still some discussion.
Relon?
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. City clerk.
Councilmember Relon?
There's some hands being raised, I think that's...
Can we not have discussion on the motion? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nobody was raising their hand to discuss. Uh, we can. Let's, uh, let's, let's table this, uh... There were no hands up at the conclusion comments that we should call the question. And so I did call the question. So, uh, Councilmember Fluid, uh, your turn to comment on the motion.
Councilmember Reed actually raised her hand first, if you want to...
If you want to go first, I can go after, after you do.
Okay, Councilmember Reed, on the motion, please.
Yes, on the motion, I'm not going to vote to table the motion or even bring Tifa before us until they are in compliance with state statute. And so I think we need to reject your motion, reject the plan, and get them in compliance. That's, those are my comments on the motion.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion? Councilmember Fluid.
So, I would agree with that. I was actually the one who pointed out at the Tifa meeting today that they're not in legal compliance with state law. I'm certainly not the only council member who has pointed that out repeatedly. But we have come this far. We have a lot of residents who are with us tonight for the purpose of the public hearing. I think I've done really nothing else but work on this for the past four days and I think we should go ahead and complete our discussion tonight. So I would be against a motion to table this until June.
Okay, thank you. I would point out that a part of the reason for the motion was a number of the members of council expressed a need for more time to consider. So I took that to heart. Okay, any other comments on the motion? Mayor Protem Robson?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. I think this is a wise motion. There have been comments about needing more time, about process, about getting more comments, getting more public engagement. I think that allows for all of that. It makes a lot of sense, so I will be voting yes on this motion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree that it would be helpful to have an opportunity to process information and not actually vote this evening and delay that. With that said, however, I think it would be important to exhaust our discussion as a group in order to have that perspective as well to, to consider when voting at a later time. So perhaps that is a possible amendment where we continue our discussion tonight so we have this healthy contribution of all the facts so that we have something to work with and then we can go back and come back at a later date to actually vote. And, and also to give us an opportunity to determine at what level of compliance we're at because that certainly is an absolute necessity.
So you, you're, do you have a motion to amend the motion that's on the floor?
I would, I'd be happy to do that. I would be, so amend the motion to reflect the fact that we will continue and exhaust our discussion tonight as a council and delay an actual vote until the June meeting in order to give us all an opportunity to process that information, to give additional opportunities for residents to contribute feedback, given what they've heard this evening and to ensure we are in compliance.
Okay. I'm having a little bit of internet problems here, but I think I'm coming back. I think you're all back. So the, I'd like you to be more specific about, if you could, not necessarily, I suppose, but consider being more specific about the statement where it says exhaust our discussion.
I think just get us to the point where we all feel as if we've heard, we've been heard and we have contributed our comments to the final disposition of the draft that's in front of us so that admin can then go back and consider those comments.
Okay. Is there support for that amendment? Apparently, no support. Most, the amendment dies for a lack of a second. Any other comments on the motion that's on the floor? Okay, with that, we're going to go back to calling the question. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Rowland?
No.
Reed?
No.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Lowry?
No.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Motion carries. We will resume our, our discussion on the planned amendment at our June eighth meeting. Thank you. With that, I'd like to just get a, a sense of a show of hands if the council would like a short recess before we dive into the remainder of the agenda. Or should we push on?
Sure.
How many? Raise your hand if you'd like a short recess. Enough of you seem to prefer a short recess. I will call a short recess. My computer says it's eight twenty-one. We'll reconvene at eight thirty.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Looks like everyone is back and on time. If we could unmute the members of council.
Mayor Denner, one point I do want to clarify after reading my notes here. Mr. Donnelly did send a email to Assistant Manager Smith. However, I interpret it as to be a general public comment to be read during general public comment at the end of the meeting, not during the Tifa, due to the amount of different questions and/or subjects that were of different areas of the city.
Okay. Perhaps then save that for a public comment at the end of the meeting and then with that in mind, use it as written comment during that time.
Can I, can I ask you a question about one of the comments that was made? Mary Rulo had asked how to get some documents entered into the record. Can we clarify that?
She wanted it to the city. Please just submit, the clarification would be to submit documents to the administration.
Thank you.
And then they'll take it from there as appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, I, I call the meeting back to order. All appear to be present and we'll proceed with the next agenda item, which is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget hearing and budget approval. Much like the last topic, this is a public hearing, subject to appropriate notice, and it is to hear the public. Followed, it will be followed by, intended to be followed by a discussion of council and final approval or amendment and approval of proposed budget for our next fiscal year. By way of background, every year the city is required to produce a balanced budget. Administration's been working very hard on that. In fact, they were working very hard on the budget before the pandemic and then a number of things had to be revised and in the budget in order for it to, to recognize as much as possible what was known, what's known at the time or what's known now. The, the budget was discussed by council in great detail, line by line, at a budget workshop, which was this past Thursday. This is the public hearing to gain public input before the council completes their deliberations for the approval of the budget. We are required by statute and charter to approve a balanced budget. Our charter dictates that we must approve a balanced, balanced budget by May eighteenth. So with that in mind, City Manager Seizlem, did you want to say anything before we open the public hearing?
No, I think just, you know, I appreciate the city council sitting through. We had a good, long discussion, four hours long, and thank you for your patience as that was my first budget workshop. I do want to thank again just the staff, Jane Blayhut, my assistant Leah Smith, and others at the city trying to work on a budget during COVID nineteen and made a lot of changes. I feel very comfortable with it, as does Jane Blayhut, and so I just wanted to thank you, the council, for your questions and comments and just, I'm good. Other than that, I do have one emailed.
Let me officially open the public hearing. With that, I will officially open the public hearing for considering, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hodges, you would like to interrupt?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Denner. Please forgive me. I have said, but given my hat as council member for finance, if I could just make a couple of comments to kind of set the stage unless you would prefer I wait till the end of the, the hearing because that would be appropriate as well.
I suppose it's, it's, at this point, it's your preference. It's the way of introduction and introducing the, the budget, make them now. Otherwise, you'll have plenty ample time to, when we get to the discussion of the approval and resolutions and possible amendments to the budget.
Well, my comments are brief, so if it's okay, I'll take this moment now. Most importantly, I really want to thank our staff team for working very hard to get the budget to this point under very difficult circumstances with COVID, with the furloughs, with other delays that have contributed and continued reductions and just overall budget challenges. But of course, this is our most important financial planning tool, so it's important that it be done well. And beyond that, I would like to specifically say our finance director and I have had many conversations about the importance of aspirational budgeting. I know Member Reed has contributed some best practices in the past, particularly as it relates to Gross Pointe Shores and opportunities for us to model those best practices. Ms. Blayhut and I have committed to that as well and she's worked diligently. I hope you all will enjoy the myriad of graphs and data charts that have copied this budget document, which as I understand are an evolution from past documents and a step in that direction of very solid management. I would recommend going forward, another incremental step in that direction would be doing a three to five-year view and doing some goal setting as well so that we can align our budget with the goals of the, the entity. And just to give some quick general notes as well. And just to give some quick general notes as well, the charter does require that an independent audit be completed, which did occur, and that came back clean with no recommendations. The bonded indebtedness of the city is well within a healthy range, and our bond council has not recommended any refinancing at this time to save money. And our bond rating is a double A minus, which is the best you can have given Headley restrictions. Our fund balance is a healthy 20%, which is well within the recommended range for a city of our size, so we're operating at a best practice, which is particularly successful, given the fact in 2008, we were closer to about 2%. You will note, and I won't delay the meeting now with details of it, but we worked hard to be sensitive to feedback we received from residents and fellow council members throughout the past few months, and those have all been factored in. And I've also been assured by staff that we're in full compliance with all labor agreements, contracts, debt retirement, and other requirements. And more on the soft side, but I think something we're celebrating is the fact that I believe this is the last meeting that Jane Blayhut will be taking minutes, because we've enabled the resources that are necessary for somebody to support her in that regard and free her to be an active part of these meetings and make a professional contribution. Also, we have worked in an opportunity for streaming equipment and the likes that these meetings are streamed going forward. So with that, I would end reminding everybody that we do have a charter issue that we need to remedy, and that documents were presented out of the time sequence that's required by the charter. I think we all understand the circumstances that led to that, but I think in terms of good governance and proper management, we should consider releasing ourselves from that obligation, if in fact, that was the will of this body and the recommendation of our city attorney. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, and I appreciate the time to kind of set the stage and share those important foundational points for good financial management.
Thank you, Member for Finance Hodges. With that, I'll formally open the public hearing and ask for public comment. City Manager Seisland, you said you had some written comments?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. You're seeing me fiddling right now because my headphones might die, so if I cut out for a second, you'll know why. I had one written comment emailed by Mr. Tim Kohler on Berkshire. City Council, City Manager, and Mayor, joining what I hope are many in the community who are reaching out regarding the current budget about to be voted on by City Council. I have attended the workshop on Thursday evening and found myself just staring blankly, not sure how to fully respond or react. I've spent the last two months in my position with the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity for the State of Michigan, dealing directly with the new reality of our world, our state, and our community is facing. Planning for the reality in which we're living in now and having to model and forecast the future based on various scenarios has been my primary focus. Every morning, I meet with our governor's council and staff, where I provide them the most recent and up to minute data I have at my disposal. Here's the grim reality of what I can disclose of current publicly available information. 1.3 million Michiganders, 25% of our covered employed workforce, have filed for unemployment since March 15th, and Southeast Michigan is the most severely impacted. The 1.3 million is just a snapshot as of May 2nd and is not inclusive of our fellow Michiganders, whose self-employment or contract work has been impacted as well and are receiving aid from the federal government. Every day at the department, we are engaging with our employer and labor communities, working on the plan to bring business and labor back, but unfortunately, many of these layoffs are having the temporary label removed from them, and the going concern for business, businesses of all sizes has steadily been increasing with each passing day. At the state level, all non-essential state employees have been furloughed for at least two weeks, and in Gross Pointe Park, we have taken the same measures with many of our park employees. A currently floated 20% reduction in upcoming revenues for the state in the next fiscal year is being projected by the Upjohn Institute in University of Michigan, economists as a best-case scenario. With the above comments, that is why I find myself staring blankly at a budget with essentially zero change at the aggregate level, and most critical and important to me, a budget that does little to nothing from my point of view to focus on keeping our local business thriving, our community safe, it lacks any consideration of what our future must certainly be. I ask that the city council vote no on the current proposed budget. That is the only written comment, Mayor Denner.
Thank you. We'll open it now to verbal comment, Assistant, the manager Leah Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. I have two people in the queue currently.
Yeah, still, you have a big echo still.
Hold on.
You're good there.
Okay, thank you. So I will share the screen. Give me one second here, sorry. And then Colin, you are going to be the first person to comment, so let me unmute you.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great. So, hi, Council Mayor Colin Mulder-McCombe, 800 block of Pemberton. I'm speaking to you tonight because, as I mentioned in the email I sent you all, the city does not appear to be confronting the reality of a COVID world. Local government should be responsive to its citizens, and after all, every single one of us has been influenced by this pandemic in one way or another, some in more drastic ways than others. But the budgets I've seen are talking about new parking lots, about preparing for a new arts center, about a whole host of topics that ignore the biggest reality in our lives right now, and the council hasn't had a meeting about how to address these problems, despite several of our council members asking them to be added to the agenda. The city needs to make plans to help our citizens and to assist our businesses and restaurants through the trying times. The city has helped businesses directly before, for instance, with Fairfax Market, helping anchor a beloved local business in a walkable neighborhood with reputable entrepreneurs, and used to help finance routes for homeowners. Something similar, working with mortgagers or landlords, for instance, or offering 0% loans to people struggling to make ends meet would go a long way, preserving the character of our community. But where are the programs like these now? I see and appreciate the chamber's involvement, but we should not be relying on non-public entities to take the place of a local response. I respectfully urge members of the council to start looking into direct ways to provide assistance to our fellow citizens who are struggling for their very survival in the face of an unprecedented shift in our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, you are going to be next, give me one second. You are unmuted, go ahead.
Thank you. Just very briefly, at the end of the workshop, my submitted comments were read off by Mr. Seisland, I believe. And at the end, the question had, was raised by, I think, one of the council members, for her questions be answered, and the answer by staff was yes. But the reality is, I have not gotten any documentation answering the many questions I had, in particular about the DDA and Tifa budgets. So I'm not going to weigh you down by reading the questions again, because I think a lot of this, and I hope a lot of this is going to come up in the discussion by council members, especially after witnessing these two meetings this afternoon, which I can only characterize as disastrous, and showing a total lack of engagement by the Tifa and DDA board members about the budget, what it meant. But I want to focus on two things that I was asking about. One is about this whole level of reserves. Where is our reserves? Where are they kept? Where are they reported? Why, for example, did the Tifa last year only spend about, I guess roughly about a third of its budget? I just think there needs to be better accountability and tracking on that. The other specific question I have has to do with legal services in both the DDA and Tifa budget. Combined, they are about $65,000 for the, projected for the next fiscal year. That's a significant amount relative to our yearly total. I would like to know, what does that represent in terms of hours? What is the scope of work? And what is the hourly rate we are paying for those services? And again, there's a lot of questions about the Tifa and DDA budgets, about residential improvements, and exactly how that breaks out, but I suspect that our, and I hope our elected officials are going to be discussing that in full in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment will be from Mr. Gannon. I'm going to mute, unmute you, give you, give me one second here. And Mr. Gannon, you might also need to unmute yourself. Okay, and go ahead.
After hearing the comments, I don't believe that any resistance or confusion should be misconstrued as against the arts, or against theater, or against the new public works, but rather how this integrates with the community as a whole. While being separate governing entities, there still exists an interdependence. While one group talks about spending 20 million, maybe plus, the other talks about abandoned buildings or focusing on developing business, why not form a task force to coordinate all independent issues, including COVID? This lack of coordination is what I believe is impeding the progress. Nice to have a state-of-the-art theater, not nice to have empty buildings or lack of business development, as GP business could capitalize also. The whole approach, and this is something that I scrolled down to. The whole approach should be rethought, not as an exercise to stop, but as an exercise to coordinate, so all GP can benefit. And this is from a 25-year resident. Thank you much.
Thank you. Mayor, at this time, I have no other vocal comment. However, Mr. Donnelly did send a chat to myself and City Manager Seisland, asking to have his written comment read now. I'm going to ask Manager Seisland if he can go ahead and read Mr. Donnelly's submitted comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Good afternoon, Assistant City Manager, as well as Councilmember Mayor Denner. As a resident who moved to Gross Pointe Park in large part due to its walkable commercial districts and availability of a rich variety of small businesses close to home, I am alarmed to see how our city appears to be choosing to allocate resources in the midst of this COVID crisis. The proposed budgets for the DDA and Tifa districts, as well as the city budget as whole, are not adequately recognizing several harsh realities and not planning for them appropriately. The cities and the Tifa's revenue are likely to take big hits in the coming years as a result of this crisis. Local small businesses are in crisis now, and no plan to help them has been put forward by the city administration. There are dozens of city employees at risk of losing their jobs. Residents are likely to face hardships that may result in being able to pay their mortgages or rent. Existing infrastructure, including the seawall at Patterson Park, is in need of immediate significant attention. Given the recent closing of Trombley Elementary, as well as the poor implementation of a bus turnaround for DDOT, we now have an increased pedestrian safety issue along Jefferson Avenue. The city does not have an approved master plan through which significant projects could be properly evaluated. I ask the council why it would approve spending any dollars in the following without first really discussing these harsh realities. What is the urgency to pass the 2020-21 budget today versus next month without a full and transparent process for all who want to take part in it? Or at the very least, why can't the budget be passed without the below items that need further discussion, given these harsh realities? Number one, the moving of the DPW facilities from Jefferson to Mac. Number two, a new parking lot and a prime piece of land next to the library in City Hall for a need that has not been shown. Number three, the construction of the new arts facility, which has never been properly vetted with the public. Thank you, Greg Donnelly.
Mayor, I have had one resident ask to have their comment read. They are uncomfortable speaking on the phone. If you want to allow that, you can. Technically, it's not following the process, so I will defer to you and the city attorney on how you would like to handle that.
Do you have a submitted comment that is clear?
I do. It, it is clear, and she is, the resident feels strongly that it should be read out loud.
Okay, I would say go ahead and read it. Councilmember Reed, do you have an objection?
Yeah, I mean, we had residents email us on the Tifa plan and ask that their comments be read, and that was denied. So if there are rules, then everybody has to follow them. I mean, I don't know who this is, or what, but I mean, we either follow the rules or we don't.
Okay. I, I think, I need a little legal counsel advice from the city attorney to see if we're, if we'd be moving out of process here.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult question in the sense that the, the rule, if you want to call it that, is you're allowed to put reasonable restrictions on public comments. I've been in discussions with the city manager to make sure that the rules we have in place are reasonable. That was the, I think, the point of the conversation earlier was comments that don't follow the rules, you know, you kind of reach a slippery slope where if you put those rules in place and then ignore those rules, what's the point of having the rules? So, you know, I, I don't think we're in, like, violation of anything if a comment is read or, or, you know, public commentary is, is favored. But to Councilmember Reed's point, then I, I don't know why we, you know, it's going to be difficult to then enforce that restriction on anything. So I guess my advice would be, although I think we should, you know, endeavor to, to favor public commentary, I think if we're going to put rules in place that govern that, they should be followed.
Okay, with that, with that advice, I'll follow it. And unless, if the resident would like to provide the, the comment verbally, that would be in order.
And I am not seeing any communication from the resident that that is how they would like to proceed, and as of right now, I have no other public comments in the queue. Thank you.
Okay. With that information, I will formally close this public hearing on the 2021 budget for the city of Gross Pointe Park. Thank you. We now enter the, the phase of our discussion about the adoption of the budget. Let me give a little, a little preamble to council and others. In fact, you know, much of it has already been, been said in my introduction and into the, in the comments of Councilmember Hodges, so I won't repeat any of that. But I will make sure the council understands what's before them. The, the form of, of, of the adoption of the budget, you know, with the, per the advice of legal counsel and how it's been done since I've been on council, is the budget has three, the budget resolutions that we need to pass really have three important components. There's really three resolutions. The first, the first resolution sets the millage rate. And, and that, that resolution is largely pro forma, because it's dictated by, and limited by Headley in the, in the current environment. And that was reviewed at the workshop. The finance director reviewed what the proposed millages would be, and they, in fact, in order to comply with Headley, are in all cases slightly less than, than in previous years, because the overall taxable valuations are up. The second, and we can, we'll deal with these one at a time. The second resolution is called a special assessment rule. There are a variety of charges that people owe the city that, for which they have not, they have not paid. It's a broad range of things, from recycling containers to, to other, to delinquent tax payments. These, these items are also pro forma added as to, as a lien on the property, and we are required as part of the budget process to recognize that in a resolution. That's resolution number two. Resolution three is really where the meat of the budget is, and the discussion about line by line, what, what, what it is that we are going to authorize the city administration to, to spend in terms of budgeted funds, in the ver- in the various funds. And that follows the, the format, fund by fund, with total appropriations and, and revenues, similar to what we discussed, but in summary form, that we discussed on Thursday. It's in that third resolution, we'll have an opportunity to go back to any, any detail that we want to discuss and amend, and potentially amend any of the, any of the amounts that are in this resolution, if this council so desires. So with that, I would, I would recommend that we move through resolutions one and two, because I believe that there will be relatively little discussion on those. And then get to resolution three and expect that that will be the meat of our discussion, because that's where the dollars are. So with that, seeing no alarm looks on anybody's faces, I will, I will read resolution number one. I propose that we adopt this resolution, resolution number one. Resolved, in accordance with PA Public Act 5 of 1982, requiring the governing body to establish the millage rate required to balance the 2021 fiscal year budget, and according, and in accordance with section 8.4 of the city of Gross Pointe Park Charter, it is hereby determined that the millage rate for general operating purposes for the fiscal year 2021, 2020 to 2021, be 17... be seventeen, seventeen point one eight three one or seventeen dollars point one eight three one per one thousand dollars of taxable value. Ten point nine zero nine three general operating, one point six one five zero rubbish disposal, zero point zero seven seven one communication fees, zero point nine three five zero bond issue, one point zero roads, two point six four six seven public safety. Do I have support for that motion? Support from Councilmember Relon. Any discussion? Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Relon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Bradson?
Yes.
Luett?
You're muted.
Luett, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes. Motion passes. We've adopted resolution number one. Resolution number two, special assessment rule. I knew, I move that we adopt the following resolution, resolution number two. Whereas in accordance with section 20.12 of the City of Gross Point Park City Code, whereby when any expense shall have been incurred by the city in respect to any single premise, and subsequently such expense remain unpaid. And whereas such premises have been advised, such unpaid bills will be placed as a lien against such property plus 15% service charge if not paid by a certain date. Be it resolved that a special assessment role for delinquent bill, bills for water and miscellaneous items be placed upon the property described in the exhibits as presented, copies of which are on file in the city clerk's office and are part of these minutes. And the respective amounts set forth opposite said properties and said exhibits, including a service charge of 15% for placing the bills for water and miscellaneous items on a special assessment role. And that special assessment shall be due and payable at the time 2020 city taxes are next due and payable with respect to such property. Is there support for the motion to adopt that resolution? Mayor Pro Tim Robson supports. I wanted to clarify one thing that I may have misstated in the introduction to these resolutions. The, the resolution text itself is more accurate than my statement. I may have included the word taxes in, in the role. That's inaccurate. It is miscellaneous charges, water bills and miscellaneous charges. The water, and interestingly enough, many residents do this as part of the budgeting process, which I don't understand. But that's, that's the way it's done. Okay, I have, I have a motion of support. Is there discussion? Councilmember Flut?
So I just need something clarified from the budget. When we had the workshop on Thursday night, on page one, close to the top, we indicated that where we typically would have an estimated income from penalties and interest on taxes. And we stated that that was being taken down to zero this year as a means of pandemic relief for our residents. So is this something that's completely separate from the special assessment that we're talking about here? Or are they connected in some way?
I believe that's true, but I, but I'll ask Clerk Blayhut, in her role as Finance Director Blayhut, to clarify that.
Yes, the special assessment, the water bills that are delinquent, they've been on the account some up to two years. So like a year, we would send them a letter saying, you know, you need, they haven't made a payment on their account. And that if they didn't set up a payment plan and didn't make good faith effort payments, that a 15% penalty would be added and put on the tax roll. So the COVID, the, the relief that we're doing on taxes are for the people who can't pay their tax bills on time in this coming year. So we're not going to charge them a penalty for that. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But, so we're only talking about people for the next fiscal year? People who can't pay their property taxes for the next fiscal year?
The property taxes are due. They go out July 1st and they're due September 15th. So if they, and they're allowed to pay them here until March 1st. So if they come in late to pay their property tax bill, we won't charge them a penalty.
Okay, and that's across the board? They don't have to apply for that?
Nope, they can just come in and we won't charge them a penalty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Clerk Blayhut, I'm sorry, Councilmember Relon.
Yeah, I'm sorry. When was, um, when was this put on the bill? I, I looked at this list. I can't believe there's this many people, like you said, Mayor Danner, that.
Yeah, this is, I can partly, when I first saw that, I was surprised. I mean, this happened, this is, this happens every year in the budget process. And as I mentioned, surprisingly, a lot of property owners are happy to do it this way and pay their city bills all at once on their taxes. They seem to budget it this way and don't have any objections. So I've always been amazed at how long the list of is. But that's, seems to be the practice and as long as they pay with their taxes, that's, that's how it works.
And then Councilmember, I may ask my other questions, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Make sure the explanation.
Yes, Councilmember Flut?
So I guess I'm still confused. So you're saying the bulk of these people choose to pay this way. How many of these people are actually being charged a 15% fee? Do you have any idea with like?
All of them. If they don't pay their.
Yeah, this is looking through, in the rearview mirror, these are things that were due during the past year.
Have, have we ever looked at? I was surprised when our library system gave relief to everybody who had overdue library materials. They gave them, you know, grace period where they said, just return the materials. We won't charge you any late fees. And they got something like 70 or 80,000 dollars worth of material back by doing that. Would it benefit us at all to waive that 15% charge? Is there any possibility that we would get more income from these bills being paid if we took that 15% charge off the top?
Well, actually, Wayne County, once I sent the tax rolls down March 1st to the county level, they reimburse us for all unpaid tax bills. So we won't see this money from the county for another year. But in the June 30th check that I received for my 2019 tax bills, will include all the special assessments from the water bills that were added on a year ago. So we get the money back regardless. We do, we do allow them to set up payment plans. Some of them will agree to set up a payment plan. And then the next year, if their bill goes up, you know, twice as high and they didn't, they didn't comply with their agreement, then we do add it on the tax bill. But we work with everybody and try to set up payment plans for everybody. A lot of people just choose to do it this way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll call the question. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Relon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Bradson?
Yes.
Luett?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, resolution number three. Resolution number three goes through each of the funds with estimated revenues and total appropriations. And it is adopted as a, as a unit. Now, there's been quite a lot of discussion about DDA and Tifa and the fact that we did have a meeting today. I'd like to call on the administration, or is the appropriate person to report to council on the, the results of that meeting and the recommendation of those bodies to council as it relates to their budgets. And also clarification, perhaps from the legal team on the, the point that was brought, was raised at the workshop about the sequence of these, these bodies adopting the budget versus council adopting the budget. So I need a little help from the administration on who should go first and provide those explanations.
Mayor Danner, if you could ask Tifa Attorney Dennis Lavassar to clarify for a second and then I can come up with a summary of actions that were discussed at DDA and Tifa today.
Okay, so former attorney, City, City Attorney Lavassar, could you comment on the, the process and the, and so on? Thank you. Are you there?
He is no longer be on the line.
No longer on the line.
Correct.
Okay, City Attorney Hollitt, are you briefed in the, in this matter in terms of the budget process?
Yes, to some extent, probably not in the same depth that, that Mr. Lavassar is. As part of the transition, I've been focused more on some of the current issues. For example, the budget we're working on and, and issues related to that. He's still working on some of the Tifa and DDA issues. But to the extent it relates to the timing of the budget, I did have a chance to look at the statute earlier today and as part of the meetings that occurred today. And I, and I think the, the main point is that the way statutorily the process works is it's up to this body, the quote governing body, which is the city council, to prepare a budget for the DDA that then subsequently is approved by the DDA board. So I think there was some discussion, it, it probably seems like longer ago, all, two nights ago or a few nights ago on the, on the budget and, and sort of the timing of how that works. But statutorily, it is this body that gives a budget or, or votes on a budget that goes to the DDA. And then that, it's after this body prepares and delivers that budget that the DDA body adopts it.
Okay, thank you. I did just get a message from Mr. Lavassar that he lost his connection and he's trying to reconnect. So perhaps when he, when he joins us, he, he may or may not amplify or maybe even repeat some of the things you just said, City Attorney Hollitt. But in the meantime, I'll ask the city manager to report on the results of those meetings.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So first, I will discuss the Downtown Development Authority. And so Mr. Craniac and the board members discussed their city budget, including, you know, that was a large topic of discussion. The line item that had a parking lot discussed in there over in front of the public library. First thing I will mention is that the board approved, you'll see it on your budget. It was, I think, administration. However, the board changed that to business support. In that, the initial recommended budget was $6,000 and now has been updated to 10,000, which is a $4,000 increase. And the final item, which was the parking lot area, that was 120,000. The board recommended that 75,000 of those funds that were to go to the parking lot be taken out of that budget. So instead, your new budget, instead of 120,000, will now reflect 45,000. So the total DDA budget for this upcoming year will move from 191,000 to 120,000. And I see Tifa Attorney, Mr. Lavassar is on the line. If he wants to comment about the budget process, Mr. Lavassar.
Well, I, I apologize. I lost connectivity for a moment or, or a minute, about, about 10 minutes. So I understand it was a question.
The, the question, and, and City Attorney Hollitt, I think he answered it. But I knew you did a lot of research on the sequence of budget approvals, the statutes, the state statute, and the question of the council approving or the, the Tifa or DDA body approving and, and how that sorts out.
Yeah, it's not, you know, it's, it's a kind of a, it doesn't talk of sequences. But it's very clear that the city council has to approve the DDA budget. Whether that occurs before and after the DDA approves or adopts a budget isn't particularly clear. Again, there's no sequence described in the statute. So what we, after the last, after the workshop, I simply suggest let's do this, you know, get the, have a special meeting, approve the budget with the DDA and Tifa. We had two separate meetings and, and now presented to you as an approved budget by the DDA.
Okay, thank you. So going back to City Manager Sizlin's comments coming out of the meeting, the DDA board has recommended some changes. As I understand the summary, the district marketing budget would be increased from 6,000 to 10,000. And the, the item municipal parking improvement, which was 75,000 in the detailed budget, would be deferred with consideration, reducing the budget. If you look on this, this resolution number three on the second page, the DDA shows a total appropriations of 191. That would say that, that, that would lead to the DDA recommending that those appropriation, that appropriation number be reduced to 120,000. And, and by its, that reduction of $71,000, I assume would be therefore a reduction in the allocation of reserves that show in the source of funds. And so the 193,426 would be reduced similarly by that $71,000. Is that consistent with your understanding, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor Danner, that is correct.
Okay. Let's move on to the report, report out from the Tifa board.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. The Tifa board with Mr. Craniac and Jim Odell did meet this afternoon. However, discussing, discussion with the board led to no changes to the Tifa budget at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, in order to begin our discussion, now I'll point out that I'll open for discussion. But those, the change that was recommended by the DDA board to their budget would need to be adopted by us as an amendment to the original motion that I'm going to make to adopt resolution three as presented in order to keep, keep things straight and rule of order. As the budget that we are starting with is the one that was subject to public publishing and public notice. We do have the authority and responsibility to amend it if we see fit. So we'll start with what, with a motion to adopt as presented in a second, begin discussion. And then in that discussion, if we come up with any amendments that we'd like to make, we will log those amendments and, and deal with them. Is that clear? Got it. Okay, so I will, I will go through this. Resolution number three, resolved that having published proper notices and held a public hearing for the budgets of the following funds for fiscal year 2020-21, such budgets are hereby adopted in the amount set forth and purpose intended, along with increases in related revenue sources. General funds, you, you have some detail. I will summarize total estimated revenues, 11, 11,854,571. Total appropriations, 11,851,057. Major street fund, total estimated revenues, 1,314,587. Total appropriations, 1,298,747. Local street, total estimated revenues and TI, 1,1,519. Total appropriations, 985,393. Garbage and rubbish collection, total estimated revenues, 1,235,642. Total appropriations, 1,219,189. Building department, total estimated revenues, 321,369. Total appropriations, 321,295. Downtown Development Authority Fund, total estimated revenue, 193,426. Total appropriations, 191,000. Tax Increment Finance Fund, total estimated revenues, 1,318,070. Total appropriations, 1,316,500.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor. So the, the DDA fund was adjusted today? Should we, should we be putting?
193,426 is estimated revenues. That was in the original budget. Total appropriations, 191,000. That also was in the original, original budget. And each change, if we wish to adopt the recommendation of the DDA, would be done as an amendment by this council.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Tax Increment Financing Fund, total estimated revenues, 1,318,070. Total appropriations, 1,316,500. Total appropriations, 1,316,500 dollars. Indigent Defense Fund, total estimated revenues, 10,400 dollars. Total appropriations, 10,400 dollars. Drug Law Enforcement Fund, 3,000 dollars. Total estimated revenues, 3,000 dollars. Total appropriations, 3,000 dollars. Block Grant Fund, uh, total estimated revenues, 20,000 dollars. Total appropriations, uh, 20,000 dollars. Uh, Road Fund, total estimated revenues, 648,321 dollars. Total appropriations and TO, 640,000 dollars. Uh, Bond Debt, estimate, uh, total estimated revenues, 594,000 dollars. Total appropriations, 593,200 dollars. Capital Improvement Bonds, Series 2019, total estimated revenues, 2,215,000. Uh, total appropriations, 2,215,000. Capital Improvement Fund, total estimated revenues, 552,468. Total appropriations, 552,468. Uh, To, uh, Water and Sewer Fund, total estimated revenues, 5,564,015 dollars. Total appropriations, 6,373,733 dollars. Marina Fund, total estimated revenues, 293,000 dollars. Total appropriations, 274,400. I believe that I had made the motion that we adopt this resolution and, and discussion, I, I require, uh, support. I support. Mayor Broten Robson supports. With that, I'll, uh, I'll open discussion and, um, right, well, yeah, we'll try that, we'll try the hand approach, and if it turns out everybody wants to talk at once, we'll go back to the roll call approach I used last one. So we'll start with the hand approach. Councilmember Flett.
You're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
Unmute, please. A lot of beauty.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Um, so the only real issue I have with the budget as a whole are the DDA and Tifa funds. And I'm going to go over a couple of points. I listened to, um, both of those meetings today. Um, which were less than optimal, to say the least. Some of this, I'm probably going to repeat next week when we go back to vote on, um, the Tifa amended plan, but I'm going to make some of those points now. The Tifa is not helping out small business owners in the district. There's not a lot of effort being made. There is a, there's a small amount of effort being made. There are some ideas out there, but when we're being told that businesses are being approached to ask if they need assistance and they're being offered relief on a case-by-case basis, and then I'm going and I'm speaking to businesses, and what I'm hearing is that that is not what is happening. None of the businesses I spoke to, and I reached out to several of them individually, none of them had been approached by anyone. And in fact, some of them had approached their landlords and been told that, no, they were not getting any rent relief. We know that Royal Oak and Dearborn are assisting their small businesses. I asked in mid-March for our city attorneys to start doing some research on this and to see what we could do to assist. So we're two months later. I don't have an answer. I'm not sure how long we need to do research on this topic before we can get an answer. Um, I emailed the Tifa Director. I did not get a response. That's not unusual. That seems to be, uh, the MO for more than one person. And I think we need to understand, this is not my quote, somebody else said this to me the other day, and I thought it was an excellent point. Everybody loves our walkable business districts. We love our walkable neighborhoods. There's not going to be anything to walk to if we don't start helping out our small businesses. The ones I have talked to, some of them may be fine, some of them may not need any assistance, but I am talking to businesses that are beloved in this community, and we are going to lose them. The only business I'm aware of that has received any assistance is Mimi's. I forwarded, um, they started, I believe, a GoFundMe. I forwarded that to everybody. And as far as I know, Councilmember Robson was the one who reached out and worked on that. And I apologize if anybody else worked on that, and I'm not giving them credit. Um, because you should get credit if you, if you helped, um, to resolve that situation. That is appreciated. But keeping Mimi's open is not going to keep all of our districts as nice and as walkable as we've grown used to them being.
Is this, uh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were finished. I was going to ask you if you're, this is going to end in a recommend, is it in a motion?
It is. It is. Um, I was not, like I said, I had this more geared for the Tifa discussion, so I'm trying to tweak it as we go for this discussion instead. Um, that's probably all I need to say at this point. What I would recommend and what, what I would move is that we pull the DDA and the Tifa budgets out of our general budget, um, to be addressed later, uh, and separately, because I think, um, they both need some work. They need to be, again, compliant with Michigan State law with Public Act 57. Um, so I would like to pull them out and handle them separately from the rest of the budget. And so I'm going to make a motion that we do that.
There is support. Okay. Um, I think I'm going to keep track of these motions and then come back through them one at a time. As someone who's a Robert Schrulls expert, I believe that you're supposed to stack the, the amendments up and then come back through them in reverse order. Does that sound right?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, that is right. Okay, so we have a, a motion to pull the, uh, Tifa and, and, uh, uh, DDA budgets out. In other words, zero out the budgets and do not provide any authorization to fund any of the tax or capture for DDA and Tifa. I believe that, that is the effect of your motion.
Well, as we discussed at the budget workshop, it's, it's their money, but I think until we actually approve allocation for that money, we have a lot more detail than we have right now.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a couple of quick points, I don't want to speak on a turn, but.
You can help clarify the process, I'm sure.
Both process and, and I think, uh, Councilmember Flett raised the issue of the DDA and the research that had been done. And we have researched that issue, I thought we discussed it last week, um, that there's nothing in the DDA or Tifa statute that would seem, under any legal interpretation, to allow allocating that money directly for things like rent abatement, um, payment to landlords, um, items like that. Obviously, we're all aware that some cities are doing it. I think it was, uh, City Manager Sizlin that had mentioned that we have been trying to contact some of these other city attorneys, um, in, in locations and have not heard back. Um, so i- it's not something that we haven't looked into. I think the statute is fairly clear in the sense that it's not clear that that is a permissible use of those funds. And so that becomes something very difficult as a city attorney to advise or recommend that we do when you can't find statutory cover for it. So I, I just wanted to make it clear that we are looking at that, we're trying very hard. Um, I was at those meetings virtually, um, this afternoon as well, and, and, um, I think everybody is trying to find ways, um, to allocate that money, but we have to do so, you know, within the framework of the law that we, that we have to work with.
The Tifa DDA Attorney Lavasser, I think, has some comments, uh, on that same topic, uh, from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, let me, uh, just address the process. Um, when, uh, in, in March, uh, mid-March, when this thing really became clear about the shutdown, um, uh, I had looked at the statute, researched it, ran it by, uh, my, uh, one of my partners who's an expert in, uh, municipal finance. Um, we've researched the statute again, um, in light of what other communities are doing. Our conclusions have not changed. Um, now whatever Royal Oak, um, and Dearborn are doing, uh, their specifics are not clear. They've made announcements, but they haven't, as far as we can tell, have not given out a dollar. Um, and I had to caution, you know, the, uh, I would caution anybody that we can't, we have to follow the law, we can't follow what is in the paper about what another city might or might not be able to do. And our efforts to get specifics from various cities around the, uh, state, not just Dearborn and Royal Oak, uh, have not yielded any, uh, any good, any, you know, I mean, I'll be happy to take their ideas if, if it's legal to do and recommend them to the Tifa and DDA. But, uh, to date, um, they have not given us any kind of, any clarity. And I, I'd love to be able, I wish I could give you a different answer, but the law is what it is. Um, very constrained about what the Tifa and DDA can do. And it's very clear, we can't offer rent assistance, um, we can't pay utilities and so forth for, you know, businesses and, and residents. Um.
I'll, uh, I'd, I'd like to, uh, add to the discussion here about the, uh, about this particular amendment, about pulling it back to zero and then addressing it later. Uh, the alternative approach there, if you feel that additional things might be able to be done, would be to adopt a budget and then consider it, uh, down the road for amendment when we can gather more information about what might be possible. So that's, that's another approach that I just would throw out there. Councilmember Reed.
Um, yeah, you know, I understand the comments from legal counsel, um, but there are other opportunities through Tifa and D, and DDA, um, where we can investigate how funds can be spent to keep our districts vibrant. And I think that was part of the issue, um, that perhaps Councilmember Flett was raising. Um, but more to her point, I did also attend the DDA and Tifa meetings by teleconference today. And, and as I mentioned in my statement earlier, we're not in compliance with state statute. I've been asking about that since June of 2019. And I'm not inclined to approve a budget when they aren't in compliance with state statute. The pay, the documentation for both of these funds is sparse to none. And, you know, they need to be accountable because these are taxpayer funds. So I, I really think it's time for them to shape up, and, and we've been asking for it. Now it's time. So.
Okay. Um, anyone else? Councilmember Flett's been in on this already. Does anybody else want to comment on this, uh, topic before we move on? Uh, Councilmember Relon?
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in the same boat. Um, if they're out of compliance, that's, uh, something we, we should be able to pull them out of this budget, approve it, everything else looks great. Uh, it's, it's been a lot of work in here. I really applaud the people that put this together. Um, but the DDA and the Tifa were, were late to the game and incomplete, and I think we should pull those out. And there's still some, uh, line items in there that I'd like to discuss. So rather than trying to amend their budgets, I think we should have another workshop just for those two, because it's obvious they need some guidance from council. Uh, I think we pull those two out, help them get a right, a proper budget, get them in compliance, and then help them help our city get, go forward. But right now, I don't have the confidence that this budget is focused on what we need to be focused.
I've got a, I've got a question for the Tifa and DDA attorney.
Yes.
The word, uh, the, the phrase "out of compliance" has been used, uh, a couple of times in this discussion about these, uh, public bodies. Can you, uh, enlighten us, uh, on that?
Yeah, and, and let me just clarify something that, uh, Councilmember Reed said as well. Um, uh, you know, and I'll, I'll include that in my comment. Um, in, uh, the, is part of the Tax Increment Finance, uh, Act codified in 2018, Act 57, uh, the state legislature added some requirements about posting information, among other things, on, uh, websites. And, um, so that process, uh, is not, it, it has not been completed for, uh, the DD or Tifa. Um, there's a couple of things we need to add, um, for the Tifa and we're working on the DDA as well. Um, that, that, that did not come up in July, uh, or mid-2019. Uh, the first time we've had any discussion of it was in, uh, earlier this year. Um, and, uh, I worked, I've been working with, uh, no, I've been working with, uh, the, uh, uh, Tifa Director, DDA Director, and the City Manager to be had that information put on the, uh, the website.
I raised it to the mayor in June of 2019, and I have the email, okay?
Okay, I have not seen your email.
Okay, well, okay, I did raise it in June of 2019.
Uh, let's, let's not worry about, uh, the history so much as to where we are and what it means. And that's what I really wanted the, uh, attorney to clarify.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's being, it, it's, uh, I think by the, uh, end of the week, it'll be all, uh, uploaded out to the, uh, website. It's all available. It's just not in a, uh, on the website, is it, uh, in a easily accessible form?
Okay, so when, so, so to, so to clarify, it's, it's documentation that's, uh, that's available, it complied with, uh, uh, with, with the statute until it was, uh, recodified in, I think, 2018 to require this website. Is that, you know, is that what I understood?
Yeah, the Act, the 2018 Act that took an effect, that, uh, the cake, that took effect, um, in 2019.
Okay, so we do have to get some things on the website?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's great.
I just want to understand the seriousness of it in terms of, it's, it's posting of information, uh, that is in existence. It's not the development of information?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there further discussion, uh, any other, on the budget or any other amendments? I'm sorry, Councilmember Hodges.
I would just like to make a comment on that point. I appreciate Member Reed staying on top of those, uh, items, because I think compliance is important, but quite frankly, she shouldn't have to do that. Um, it should be a staff responsibility to be on top of that and ensuring that we're compliant. So in terms of going forward, I would like to see that woven into the goals and objectives. Uh, well, I think we need to create goals and objectives for, um, those, um, employees or, or staff members that report directly to us to ensure that there's that accountability, because that is essential and important, that we are in compliance and that staff is proactive about leading that. So I think that is important to state. We have a real opportunity going forward, because we do have new staff, um, that is credible, and I think wants to, um, make sure that that happens. Um, and also, I think it might be helpful at this moment, too, for staff to describe what amount. And there is money in both of those budgets to, uh, support the business community as part of the crisis that we're in right now. I understand it's not very detailed at this point, but I think it is important for the community to understand that that need hasn't been ignored, and there are at least dollars there that can be specified further.
To that point, um, do we have the, uh, do we have the budget handy? Are you, you've seen the budgets, they were, we went over them, but, uh, City Manager Sizlin, did you want to reiterate what is in the budgets that's directed specifically at, uh, at businesses as a result of, you know, thought added or intended to be, uh, addressing, um, you know, current economics, uh, challenges?
Uh, yes, Mayor Denner. Um, I do just want to make one general comment for the council. And, uh, Councilmember Hodges, uh, you brought up a great point, I just wanted to reiterate. Um, and I think I did bring it up, uh, for discussion in the budget workshop, but the, there is a transition, uh, that will be happening. Um, Leah, Assistant to the City Manager Leah Smith, uh, my intent, uh, with the board approval and council is that she is, uh, will end up being the DDA and Tifa Director for the City of Grosse Pointe Park, as well as helping us reach those compliance, uh, issues regarding the city website that we thoroughly need to have, uh, done. So I just wanted to make that comment for, uh, everyone on here. Regarding, uh, on the Tifa budget, I know talking with Mr. Kraniak that, um, they left, uh, open, if you look at residential improvements slash general, that 425,000, uh, that's some of those funds that, um, uh, the Tifa Board wanted to leave open-ended. I know I don't have it in front of me, but in my graph, there's a couple line items like, um, uh, alley improvements, lighting, but there is some funds available that if we do intend find something that we can provide assistance to the district, uh, we intend to do so. That, or the Tifa Board intends to do so. Uh, regarding, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Um, and then I'm looking here, there was one other I wanted to make note real quick for the council. Uh, marketing promotions, that's another thing that the Tifa Board, uh, increased their, uh, costs on. Um, the Tifa Board is actually floated around the idea of whether that's, uh, incentive through, uh, commercial businesses. The Tifa Board is actually floated around the idea of whether that's incentive through commercial businesses. Could be coupon books, could be gift cards, could be tokens. I just wanted to make note of that for those businesses and helping them with assistance. Those are directly the areas, looking on the current Tifa budget, I would say that we are currently looking at for direct district assistance for COVID-19.
And could you remind us of that marketing communications number, please, just so the community's aware of it?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hodges. That number previously in 1920 budget was $55,000, and now that is $75,000.
So that's a significant percentage.
Twenty, yeah, $20,000 has been increased, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion or proposed amendments to the budget as presented? Councilmember Reed.
This is a really small matter, but it's something that I was thinking about. It was toward the end of our budget workshop last week. And it was, the City Manager announced that we allocated $3,500 for repair to the putting and chipping green at Patterson Park. And I understand that the putting and chipping green was a gift from the foundation. And I know that Mayor Yu and Councilmember Hodges are both trustees on the foundation. And, you know, especially in with the unknown future for city budgets, and this would be discretionary spending. I would ask that with gifts from the foundation, that we also ask that they maintain the gifts that they present to us because it becomes a burden on the taxpayers when we have to repair and replace these items. So I don't know, I mean, I would like for us to be able to ask them to do that at this point and remove it from the budget. That would be a motion that I would like to add. And going forward, I think that we should have a better process for when we do accept gifts such as those that there's some thought put into how they'll be maintained during their lifespan. Because many of the items that the foundation gives relate to our parks and they do need upkeep and replacement and repair, so.
So the specific, there's some admonishment to the foundation, which is obviously a separate.
Well, I'm sure unintended, but.
But the specific budget item that you're proposing is to remove the dollars that are in the budget for maintenance of the chipping and putting green. And I believe that's in the, City Manager Seislin has added in the capital.
Yeah, it was.
Yes, that's in capital improvement.
And so this would be an amendment to restate, and you can agree or disagree with my restatement. But your amendment would be to remove $3,500 from the capital improvement fund budget that was designated for the purpose of revamping chipping greens at Patterson Park.
Yes.
Is that correct? Is there support for that? No.
All support.
Councilmember Fuett supports, okay. Anything else? Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few questions I think would be helpful. Could staff confirm, give us a little bit of detail on the surplus numbers in both budgets? What is contained with them, where they came from, and if there are other dollars below the line that are not reflected in the actual budget?
Which fund surpluses are you interested in? Each fund has its own fund balance, right?
Specifically the DDA and the Tifa.
Okay, DDA and Tifa, fund balances in DDA and Tifa.
Well, surplus, the surplus line item.
Yeah, the same word gets tossed around a lot at year-end, surplus, reserve, fund balance. At year-end, it kind of all means the same thing, but.
Are you ready for that answer?
Yes, are you ready, Finance Director Playhat?
Yes, in the DDA fund, there is unrestricted funds of $131,877.
Is this, please say as of when?
As of June 30 of 19.
Okay.
And in the Tifa, there's an unrestricted amount of $99,756.
Okay, thank you. Now, that's as of June 30, 2019, which is the conclusion of the fiscal year. It does not take into account the activity for the current fiscal year, which doesn't end until the end of June.
Correct.
And so in a way, it depends on whether a Tifa expends additional funds as to what they're, how they're exactly going to come out. But I don't know if you have a forecaster there or not, Finance Director.
Well, currently in the Tifa budget, they haven't spent a lot of their monies to date. So that's why they were able to allocate $400,000 for next year into the surplus account. Because as of right now, I'm sorry, I got to grab my budget.
Recognizing that we still have a couple months to spend.
385, I think.
Correct.
Thank you.
So all dollars available to both entities are clearly reflected in these budgets, then?
Yes.
Okay, and then could somebody also please, just because these are concerns we're hearing from the community, I think it's important to get the clarification out there, just clarify the staffing costs. So it's clear who we're paying for and how?
Where?
In DDA and Tifa.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify some. City Manager, did you want to clarify that?
Yes, Councilmember Hodges, can you repeat your question?
Mr. Seislin, just trying to make sure the community and ourselves understand considerations related to staffing for both of those budgets. I think it's unclear as to the status of the existing director, how long his service may be budgeted for, and what other staff-related costs are provided for. I know that there is at least a percentage for other staff within the city staff, you know, accounting staff, et cetera, that's supporting the DDA and the Tifa. So I think it would be helpful to the community to really understand what that total cost is and how we're supporting those two entities.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hodges. I will go ahead.
City Manager, we're getting quite an echo when you speak.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'll go over DDA first for members of council. So in your previous budget that we discussed on the workshop, line item that said salary is administrative, the director's position requested budget was to be about $6,000. However, he is foregoing a salary, and so those funds will now be used towards business support. So currently in the DDA budget, there's no appropriation for payment of employees. Moving on to Tifa, the first line item under project development, this is before the director is foregoing his assistance. Salaries, full-time employees, a portion of $20,000 of that is going to Leah Smith, Assistant to the City Manager, who will be working with Dale and transitioning to DDA and Tifa. Public Works employees, gardening employees that you'll see over at Park and Rec that come over and water the flower plants and such at Kirtur and Charlevoix. Payroll of City Hall staff. And then under Director and Finance, that portion of those funds were for Dale and for payroll as well. And as I go down the line here, that is it for payment of employees. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. And I think it just would be helpful to Mr. Seislin, I know the community's expressed concern about the impact of the crisis and whether or not we've been aggressive enough in reflecting that in our budget. And when I have conversations with you and others, you're able to effectively explain that and give some level of confidence that that's been factored in. You know, in part, there's a significant difference between local and state-level budgets and other considerations related to capture and the percentages of value increase in the tax base and the like. Do you, are you comfortable giving us a minute to provide some context there too so the community feels that we've properly and responsibly addressed the crisis?
So to clarify your questions, I understand it for the City Manager, it's to discuss the considerations that have been given to the impact on our revenue stream because of the pandemic. And I'll just give a little preamble here, recognizing that the major component of our revenue stream is, most know, our property taxes. And then there are a number of miscellaneous revenues. One large one called state revenue sharing, and then a number of miscellaneous revenues that relate to various activities within the city. With that preamble, I think that City Manager, Councilmember Hodges would like you to comment on how we considered impact on those revenue streams.
Thank you, Mayor Denner and Councilmember Hodges. So I'll make a couple points real quick for, you know, the current taxable value of the City of Gross Point Park is about $600 million. The assessed value is over $800 million. I think it's close to about $820. So the Tifa during COVID-19 and among the city budget and other funds felt comfortable that even if there is a slight, you know, economic downturn, that the city could still operate, you know, as fully functioning, as is DDA and Tifa. The Tifa District, for example, in the last couple of years has seen increases to their budget. If you looked at your graphs on Thursday as a city council, their funds have been going up every year. You know, that's something to note. And in regards to, I think it's, might be pertinent, but it might be a little off-topic. I did want to note that both the DDA and the Tifa Boards did discuss at their meetings today about providing and/or using resident input and a board member input for ad hoc committees to help with COVID-19 assistance. You know, what can they do to help with those funds, not only of what our attorneys have looked into, what administration has looked into, but also getting a group of, you know, residents, board members, and staff together to look at COVID-19 assistance. I hope that's answered some of your questions. If there's anything else to clarify, please let me know.
Well, perhaps, and other things worth mentioning would be the fact that reductions in revenue sharing were factored in as well as furloughed staff. City services that might not be delivered this year because of COVID results and a reduction in costs that are also impacting the budget in a cost-responsible fashion. Is that, are those fair statements as well?
Yes, and I'm glad you made mention of those. So as we discussed as a city council, you know, one of the challenges we had to face was as soon as COVID-19 hit, we essentially had to shut down all of Parks and Rec. In regards to the theaters were shut down, you know, which includes our theater sales concession stands, membership, gym rentals. Those took significant hits to where you had a skeleton building, so you're not, there's no revenue being generated there. And so we anticipated for this fiscal year about three and a half months of those effects. And then due to COVID-19 still extending, and as you've just, we've all experienced that, May 28th will be the extension of stay home, stay safe through. There could be guidelines that still prohibit Parks and Rec from becoming fully operational. And so Jane and I, we took our budget and basically did a 10/12 budget for the fiscal year. For those, what we did is our fiscal year ends June 30 of 2021. So as of July 1, 2021, we basically looked at our budget as 10 months instead of 12 because we are anticipating Parks and Rec may not be able to operate fully until potentially end of August, early September, depending on what the circumstances and/or guidelines are by the state of Michigan. You will note too that with those revenues, we also, you know, had to make some difficult choices. Furloughing some employees with the city, not only at Parks and Rec, but of other employees here at City Hall. We did end up having to look at about a 10% reduction for the upcoming fiscal year in sales tax and Act 51 monies, which are those road funds. I did mention about wages, you know, we did have to look into that. However, you know, if there's no theater or whatnot going on, then we're also getting neutral with those wages and expenses. So that really made the city cost-neutral in regards to some areas of Parks and Rec, which was extremely helpful. To further reiterate on this, and I'm really glad you brought this up, Councilmember Hodges, because I should have brought this up earlier, is the city really looked into not only, you know, what else besides these, but looking into the general fund of areas that we didn't spend our money on that we could help save with costs in the capital improvement fund. For example, I'm going to read off a couple just so the public for their information. A computer programmer is IT information that was another line item. We're not spending in this budget, and we're going to save $13,000 right here. Test, repair of building and public safety is about $15,000, that's a savings. Public works, repair maintenance land is about $15,000. In the capital improvement fund, certain appropriations, staircase to the lavins deck was about $10,000. Lease of a Xerox machine photocopier, that was about $5,000, just all for your information. Sorry, I kind of went on a ramble there, but those are areas we've really looked at, you know, to, you know, help our budget out.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one last observation, when doing my research in due diligence relative to the Tifa projections, I noticed in 1985, the projections of capture that were made at that time actually ended up being less than actuals. And that includes 2008. So I'm hoping the same will be true going forward from this point, because I think that's a significant observation. So if I can repeat that, the projections that were made in 1985, when the Tifa was formed, that indicated what the expected captures were to be annually were actually lower than actual, even through the whole 2008 recession period.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed.
I think we can agree that we don't really, we can't really forecast those projections on the particular situation we're in right now. It's nothing like the 2008 recession. So we can't really, I mean, Mr. Seislin, you're not relying on those upticks in the Tifa and the DDA based on our projections prior to the pandemic, is that correct? I can't hear you.
Nick, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so Councilmember Reed, your question was, does your current budget reflect COVID-19 regarding DDA and Tifa? Is that the question at hand? I just want to clarify.
Well, you were telling us to look at the graphs and to note the increase over time. But really, you know, all bets are off with COVID-19. And we can't say that we're going to experience the same level or that it's going to look like it did even considering the 2008 recession.
No, and you're absolutely correct.
And so in that respect, I sent you, I forwarded you an email from SEMCOG with an upcoming budget scenario planning during COVID-19 that's coming up. It might be worth our while to hear what, you know, regionally they're projecting, and that's coming up toward the end of the month. And then my other comment is, I'm not really comfortable with having an unpaid professional running our tax increment finance authorities. You know, there's no accountability there. I don't know the motivation for that, but I think it's really important for us to have accountability with, you know, across all levels of city administration. And we as elected officials, we're accountable at the ballot box. So I really am not a fan of an unpaid director of DDA and Tifa.
Okay, I think what we should do in that regard is take up the, at a future meeting, take up the transition of the director role formally, as Nick has, as the City Manager has recommended, to the Assistant to the City Manager with oversight by the City Manager. And then presumably during a period of transition, the current director and an unpaid And then presumably during a period of transition, the current director on an unpaid basis would provide support. So we can act on that at some point in the next meeting or two so that it's effective early in the next fiscal year. And we can decide as a council if we're going to recommend a, recommend a Tifa, you know, that director change, Tifa and DDA. So that'd be my suggestion there is to, is to take that on board to be able to formalize that more specifically sooner rather than later. Okay, I'd like to put one more amendment on, on the, on the floor. And that is to go back to where we started, which was the recommendation of the DDA board to adjust the budget, their budget to, as they recommended, reduce both revenues and appropriations by $71,000. The reason I wanted to put this on the table is that should the earlier motion about pulling the budget out fail, I don't think we want to be in a position of approving the budget that, without that adjustment. So I would like to put that amendment on the table as, so that we have an opportunity to, if we accept their budget, to accept their reductions for the DDA. Do I have support?
Mayor, I have one question. Yeah, I support that. I like a discussion.
So, so, go ahead. Support by Councilmember Relon. Okay, question, comment?
Yeah, can you reiterate what the DDA's final budget was? I was confused.
Yes.
71,000.
Yes, I can. Their, their recommendation, their recommendation would be a total estimated revenues of $123,000, $122,426 and total appropriations of 120,000. And as soon as I did the math, right, subtracting 71 from 193, I think I did.
So I'm, I'm looking online and I see their estimated budget. It has the marketing, they moved from six to 10. That's correct, right? Or six to eight?
Six to 10, that's correct.
Westchester Jefferson, they kept it 20, which is great to add that much money in for that, that crossing. Legal services, they have $20,000, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then Dale at the meeting today mentioned that was for the art center. He specifically said this 20, legal service is going to be for the art center. I wrote it down. So I just, just need to clarify.
Without, without looking at, you know, going back to what the true impact was on a line item basis.
Yeah.
They, they, they recommended increase, increasing that marketing budget by $4,000.
Yeah.
And they recommended removing a $75,000 line item for parking lot improvement. So the net of that is $71,000 and that is the adjustment, and that is the recommended adjustment that they have on the table.
Okay.
So that's my.
Only other question I have for that budget is the site clearing of $45,000 because that relates to the art center as well. That's clearing of land prepping for the art center, whereas the purchaser of the art center land should be paying for their own clearing. And the second part of that is the art, $45,000 to clean a garage that's been around for so long is not enough money. So I'm wondering if we do approve that site clearing, how do, who pays for that overpaying, overestimated, underestimated cost?
The, that number is actually based on an earlier, earlier bid, as I understand it. So it's, it's a better number than you're, than you're alluding to. But specifically in response to the question of what site is being cleared. Typical of what DDA has done in many cases in the past is to clear a site for redevelopment. In this case, it's, it's referring to the DDA site or the DP, the old DPW site. So it'd be clearing the old DPW site.
Okay. And, and we're okay with that as a council paying for that, prepping for the art center?
I think, I think prepping for any development, let's say down the road that for whatever reason the art center goes south. An old building like that, a blighted old building like that is actually a detriment to redevelopment and is a drag on the, on the value of it. And that's why the DDA is traditionally, when, when, when they had a chance, get rid of old blighted buildings so that development's more feasible.
Because when we, we buy buildings from Henry Ford Health System, we, we pay for the demolition of the houses we buy for our development. I'm wondering why we can't take that off our, our bucket and let them pay for it.
So it, all I can say is that it's, the DDA views it as a part of their function to support the district, to encourage redevelopment within their district.
And as a, as a representative of our residents, I'd like to take that off of their budget as well. Until they have an estimate of what, what it's going to cost to do it, then they can come back to us and ask for that money, but 45,000.
So is that, is that an amendment? Is, do you have a proposed amendment to take that $45,000 line item off?
Yes, I propose we amend the budget to remove the $45,000 line item contingent on any needs once the estimates come, come about, more than one estimate.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's, that's, yeah, the DDA budget, right?
Thank you.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilmember Fluid.
Yeah, and just, just to add some detail behind this, I know this is DDA's money. I'm happy to give them money once they prove the way that they're going to spend it. I know I've seen that we need council oversight on that. We're not going to keep the money away from them. They just need to ask for it when they need it rather than giving them a green light. As we talked last, last week on Thursday about the parking lot, giving them that green light. I think we need to trim them down and then as they need money, approach us for it and then we can discuss it properly.
I will say that that's not the way that.
Exactly.
Are able to run. That would be the equivalent of asking our city finance department to come back to council to approve, you know, each of those, for example, capital improvement items at the time that they're ready to actually expend it. And typically we approve the expenditure, but not, but not the, not the budget. Without, without the budget guidelines, they have no, they have no ability to plan or manage. And I think it's important when you've given somebody the responsibility to do that, that, that you give them the guardrails, the guidelines. That a handabout approach is a very bad way to run any kind of a.
So.
An operation.
So to follow up on that, we gave them $50,000 for that bus turnaround that cost over $100,000. So they're 100% wrong on their budgeted amount for that, and that proves that they can't work off of a budget a year in advance. They can, they can come up with their ideas three months in advance. We can approve them in a timely manner, especially since they're out of compliance still. And I think that's how we can represent our residents that way.
Okay, I do disagree with that, but you do have an motion on the floor to specifically remove the 45,000 dollars for the site clearance. That is, I will point out to the rest of the council, viewed by the philanthropic community as an important, important part of this and is in fact a part of the expectation associated with the, the money that has been pledged by the, by, by, in consideration for the DPW. And it's, it's the assumption that he's made, of course, and in a specific is that the site, that it's a cleared site. And he has, I do have that in writing. I am sure that if we do not give him a cleared site, that that will, that, that essentially negates that pledge. Certainly the amount he would, he would have to, he would be interested in adjusting it since the, the basis of value that was done by the real estate group that was, the basis for that pledge was based on a cleared site for redevelopment.
So that site is to be cleared for the DPW. Once the DPW is built, then that site gets cleared, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that can't be. It can't be cleared until the DPW is actually moved in.
So we're way ahead of ourselves by offering that money right now. They'll have enough time to know when the DPW is going to be gone before we give them that green light to go ahead and clear it. It doesn't seem like it's going to happen by June of 2021.
Okay, I've made my point.
Yeah, me too. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the discussion and explanation.
Anything else?
Mayor Denner, if I could just make a quick point.
Yes.
Point. I think we need to be a little bit careful because again, the statute does require that you authorize the budget prior to the DDA adopting it. And so I don't, I would have to look more carefully to see if it would work statutorily where they have zero budget and have to come requesting funds for any expenditure. And that seems a little bit inconsistent. Not saying it can't be done. We've obviously talked about, it is certainly possible to amend a budget, including for funds like that. I would just want a little bit of time to take a quick look at whether or not it fits within that statutory framework to say, we've eliminated the line item budget, we've approved nothing for the DDA, so there's nothing for them to adopt. Because there are some requirements too, from a timing standpoint, under the Gross Point Park Charter, for when a budget has to be approved. I, I hope that's clear. It's late. I know we're, I'm probably not making any sense to you as hard as it is for me to think. So I guess my point is what I'd want to be very clear about is by the time we're required under the charter to approve a budget, that we've got some mechanism where we can say, again, according to the statute, we've approved something that now they have to adopt as opposed to pulling everything out and they've got nothing to adapt. I would just want to.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Grano.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the administration for preparing the budget. I think it's very tough times for those of us who have been on council through the Great Recession. We understand how hard it is to budget in a time like this. And this is another budget that's balanced. I fully expect that we'll probably have to make amendments mid-year because we don't know the future. When you look at the experts, there's three scenarios on what can happen with COVID-19, another major wave, a slow burn or multiple small waves. We don't know what's going to happen because we're in inning two or three of a nine inning game with COVID-19. So we have a legal requirement that we have to pass something by next Monday, and I think we did the best that we could. I'd also like to echo the sentiment that we are property tax based primarily, property tax is a lagging indicator. So we won't see a hit really to our revenue for a year or two. I should also point out that the city administration through the Great Recession learned how to maximize revenue in an economic downturn and how that survey works by the county to set our property tax rate and to maintain our revenue. So the city is experienced in this. We don't know if it's going to be a great depressionist or if it's going to be a great recession when it comes to property tax. But what we've done so far is good. I generally agree with Councilmember Reed that when a gift is given, money should be given to maintain the gift. However, the $3,500 for the chipping green in the beds, I think it's pretty clear. We've agreed that a dog park's not going in that section of the park and that section of the park is dilapidated. I was up there last summer. I probably could dig through my emails. I emailed the city administration and walked it with Nick and Dale multiple times. Those beds are horrendous. And so I wouldn't agree at this time not to do it. But I agree with the sentiment that it should be maintained probably by the gift giver. I also think that zeroing out the Tifa and DDA budget is not the appropriate way to handle this. I think amendment is the more appropriate way, maybe later down the line. Or I don't agree with Councilmember Relon's wiping out $45,000 in this instance. But I think that's the better thing to do, the better amendment, if we were going to go that way. Is it, I mean, I think most of us agree that like pedestrian lighting and the improvements on Mac, I mean, on Jeffers and, and Westchester are good things that we're not against. I think the real thing, the elephant in the room is the potential art center and moving DPW, those specific line items. Counselor wanting to strike, I think would be the better way to go and approve the rest of the budget. I agree with city attorney Howlett that we should give them some budget and most of the stuff in their budget, like $425,000 in the Tifa budget for residential improvements. I strongly support, and I wouldn't be for getting rid of that at this point. And so I think the amendment process that's available to us and the ability to take out one line is the better way to go. I fully support the budget as it is. Just going to talk about it slightly, when the Tifa plan was up, improving the, or building a new DPW garage is badly needed. It's been something I've been working on for 15 years. And so having some money in the budget for that, I think is appropriate. Clearly, they can't spend it until the Tifa plans approved, the site plans approved. All the bids go out. There's still a ton of steps for us to come in and have oversight for the community to give input. But for them to have a budget plan that says continue planning for this, I think is appropriate at this time. So with that, I just thank the administration for presenting a valid budget for trying to be on top of the COVID-19 issue. Lastly, I would just point out, as the mayor did, that state shared revenues is the area that I think is most going to go hit by the state budget that only makes up 8.5% of our general fund budget. It's not a huge amount. And with that, it also note under Headley, when we have requirements by the state to do certain things, they are supposed to fund that. And if they cut us more, we haven't recovered from the Great Recession and our state share revenues. If they cut us more or other communities more, they're going to have a major lawsuit on their hands because there's not much more you can cut us without being in violation of Headley. And we've talked before about, is it the right time to have a lawsuit against the state? So I know the state's in a bad spot. Hopefully bail out four from the federal government as a state employee. I'm watching very closely because I'm sure my salary is going to get hit pretty soon. Hopefully the federal government bails out the state and we don't have these issues. But if not, that's the area they're going to go after and I'm going to have to rely on the Mexican municipal league and our council here to decide what we're going to do about that. But even if they were to hit our state share revenues, I think it's such a small percent of our budget that we will be able to survive that with the cuts that the city manager and finance director have recommended. And so I strongly support this budget as that we move forward on it.
I'd like to, one last thing, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, just going back to I guess both councilmember Grano and Relon's commentary on the DDA budget for $45,000, the item for $45,000 for site clearing. And maybe someone on this call, the city attorney has the answer. I do have a copy of the purchase agreement from the October meeting, not the signed purchase agreement. I'm assuming that was executed later and I'm trying to do two things at once, read that and also respond here. I don't see that we are obligated to provide, to clear the site. Maybe it's in there. If someone knows that for a fact, please share that with me. But according to section six, our obligations are to convey the property when they have, when they've given us written notice that they have funding. So.
Right, the, in a technical sense, you are absolutely right. It is not, it's not an obligation of the city. It is, it is a proposal and a, has been an obligation by the DDA to do that. So it's the DDA, and that's why it's in the DDA budget, not in the city's general fund budget.
So, okay, so then to councilmember Grano's point and Relon's point, if the better course of action is to reduce their budget and not zero out their budget, then it seems that we're not obligated to add the $45,000 for site clearance. When they're in compliance and they want to amend their budget, then we can explore it at that time. I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think with that, it's getting very late. I'd like to get through these amendments and get on to the remainder of the agenda. So hopefully we'll, we'll get into, we'll just have a few, one or two more substantive comments and then get into moving on. Councilmember Fluid.
Two things quickly. One is who's responsible for the site clearance at Verdon? So I'm assuming we're going to do that. The city's going to pay for that.
That is correct. The Tifa is doing that as part of the development.
So even though we're buying that lot from them, they're not going to be expected to do site clearance before we actually purchase?
That is correct. It is, you know, it is customary for a economic development entity such as a Tifa or a DDA to do site clearance as opposed to wherever the source of the property came from. So that's, that is pretty much standard practice in Tifas and DDA's when acquiring blighted property for redevelopment.
I, I, councilmember Relon already said this, but I would like to reiterate too, it would be nice to see estimates for those things. The last Tifa meeting I attended, they were given some estimates for actual construction of the DPW facility. And those were. And those were just large numbers that were read aloud to the board. I don't think they were formal estimates and I, I think that would be good practice to put out RFPs and get formal estimates before those things are voted on or approved.
They, they will be. To be clear, there will be our, there will be an RFP that's going to be administered by the by our architect that was hired by Tifa. It will be formal cross-s, cross-estimates and those will be a part of what is on the table when we consider the, the resolution to issue the bond. So we need those numbers and it will be based on competitive bidding. It's not going to be just an estimate at that point. It'll be based on, it'll be provided by a construction company.
Okay. And then my second point is back to the motion that I made, which is that I'm not necessarily talking about zeroing out their budget. I'm saying let's not approve their part of the budget tonight. I know by May 18th, by next week, we have to have our balanced budget in place. I'm not talking about holding their budgets captive for an indefinite period of time. I think within a couple of weeks, we should be able to get the type of answers that we're looking for. Again, those items that are supposed to be on the city website include contracts, which are fairly important information. So it's not like we're talking about denying information to the DDA and Tifa for, for months on end. I think we pull them out tonight and we get them back incorporated again into the budget as quickly as possible.
Okay. With that said, let's work our way through the motion so that we can move on. I'm sorry, there's one.
Sorry there. Just one more thing, thank you. About the Marina, we mentioned the negligence in the electrical issue there. I don't know if there was any adjustments to that. There was a lot of resident input over the last three months about the, the Marina, whether it was going to open and how badly out of disrepair it is. Is there, was there any adjustments to the Marina budget at all? Do we need to address that now? Are we talking about addressing that later? That seems like a substantial amount we should add in. That's probably a question for you, Mr. Sizemore.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Reland. No, there has been no adjustment since our discussion on Thursday.
Okay. Is there any, what, what is the plan for that? Just so we can be confident to tell our residents that we are going to address a problem we know is an issue for a major part of our city. That's such a, a part of our beautiful, beautiful part of our city.
So I guess there's really a two phased approach to this. There's a short term and there's a long term. Short term is like what I mentioned before, where, you know, we're looking to help, you know, like the solar buoys, trying to raise the one, I think it's Pier Two. Adding signage for, you know, in case of electrical shock, testing the waters, making sure, you know, safety for our residents. So those are some short-term measures we can take with our current Marina budget. We did raise Marina rates for the first time in a couple of years, I think to the tune of 5% because we do certainly need to build up those funds to help repair the Marina. And also the Park and Rec Commission has discussed, and I'm talking with Chad Craig, Park Supervisor, it's very important. I think we create actually like a Marina ad hoc improvement committee to discuss other short-term and long-term, what are the long-term things that the city and our Marina and Park and Rec can conduct. So that's my short-term and long-term answer for you at this time.
Okay, thank you. So there is, there is going to be a long-term plan developed in the next couple of months about that and with a lot of residents, is what you're saying.
That is my intent and I know that is important with the Parks and Rec Commission. That is correct.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you after.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's, and to, to be clear, I, as ask the city attorney to make sure I'm doing this in the right order, but I, I, I believe that I, that we consider the amendments in, with the last one made first and work our way all the way back to the original motion. You're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, that's correct, yes.
That is correct. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that in mind, I have three amendments that have been placed on the floor with a motion and second. The first amendment was moved by, I'm sorry, amendment number three was moved by Councilmember Reland, supported by Councilmember Fluid, and it was to specifically amend the DDA budget by removing $45,000 line item for site clearance. Councilman, or Clerk Leahd, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
No.
Reland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hajes?
No.
Robson?
No.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
No. Motion fails. Amendment number two, specifically, let's see, the, wait a minute. That was amendment number four, I'm sorry.
Bob, can I interrupt?
Yes.
I have five motions.
Okay, let's, let's, let's make sure that I haven't missed one.
Okay.
The last one I had.
So going from the, okay, the last one was Reland and Fluid to remove the $45,000 site clearing. Number four was okay, number four was you made a motion, Reland had, had supported amendment to amend DDA and revenue and expenditures the way they presented them the second time.
Right.
Number three was Reed and Fluid removed the putting green for $3,500 within the capital improvement fund. Number two was Ami and Laurie removed DDA and Tifa completely. And the first one was a motion by you, supported by Robson to adopt the budget as is and then go back and adopt the DDA.
Yeah, I have all, I have all, I have the same five. We have four amendments in the original motion, so that's why I called it amendment.
Okay, okay.
So the last one actually was amendment number four.
Okay.
So amendment, amendment number three is was moved by me and supported by, I didn't make a note who supported that.
Reland.
Reland.
Councilmember Reland.
Okay, to to accept the recommendation of the, of the Downtown Development Authority to amend their budget to reduce their revenues and appropriations equally by amount of $71,000 through the adjustments to the marketing line item and the parking improvement line item. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Grano? Councilmember Grano?
Sorry, can you read the motion again? I'm sorry.
I'll do this as closely as I can. To accept the recommend, the, to accept the recommended change to reduce both revenues and appropriations by $71,000 with adjustments to the marketing line item and the parking improvement line item.
Sorry, yes.
Reland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hajes?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Motion passes. Amendment number two was moved by Councilmember Reed and, and supported by Councilmember Fluid to remove the budgeted capital, the budgeted item of $3,500 for putting greens and flower maintenance from the capital improvement fund budget. Call, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Grano?
No.
Reed, Reland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hajes?
No.
Robson?
No.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
No.
Motion fails, amendment fails. And then amendment number one was moved by Councilmember Fluid, supported by Councilmember Reed to pull the Tifa and DDA budgets out of our approved budgets. In other words, to zero out both estimated revenues and appropriations in what we, in their, in their budgets.
Can we have more discussion on this?
We actually did that earlier, but. Well, yeah, the motion was to pull the budgets out of Tifa and DDA. And since we're required to act on their budgets, the only way to pull it out is to zero it out, as I understand it. Maybe help me with the wording of the motion and if that is, but I believe that is the only way to pull them out.
They're out of compliance. We shouldn't even be pulling in their budgets. That's what we've been trying to get through. Basically, this whole discussion has been for naught because nothing's changing. Even though everyone agreed that they're out of compliance. They're going back.
Now close the discussion. I think it's, it's time to call a question. Unless, do, unless the city attorney believes I misstated the amendment or the clerk.
I, I don't believe it was misstated, no.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Grano?
No.
Reland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hajes?
This really our only option? I select some common sense. I mean, I, can we delay? And I'm sorry for being out of order, Mayor Denner, but I, I just want good governance here. I mean, do we need to talk about delaying the vote on the whole budget until May 18th so we can deal with the DDA and Tifa stuff? I mean, is it an either or here or?
Well, this is, this is the motion that's on the floor for today's approval. And we're, we've kind of put ourselves in a position where we're required to vote on it. And we had, there were no other amendments put on the floor.
All right, um, well, I have no choice but to vote yes then because it does need to be in compliance.
Robson?
No.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
No. Motion passes. Tifa and DDA budgets have been zeroed out of the budget to be approved on, of the budget. But that assumes that we do vote then to, on the first motion, which is to approve the budgets as presented, but in it, but as amended. And the one amendment that did pass that affects the the budget is amendment number one to pull Tifa and DDA, DDA out. So the the motion, the motion on the floor is to now, now act on the original motion as amended. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Reland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hajes?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. We do have a budget. I will, based on, on where we came out on that, ask the administration to in, with all diligence to address their concerns about compliance. So that the council can adequately consider. Okay, that closes the the budget topic for this evening. And this moves on to the next topic in our agenda, which is related to the budget that we approved. And that is the proposed plan year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program funding. And you have, you have before you a memorandum from the administration like to introduce this, this topic.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So Leah Smith has just started with the city a little bit ago, actually pretty close to the week of COVID-19. And one of her responsibilities under my office is to work on grant funding. And so I'm happy to introduce Leah Smith for discussion regarding CDBG block grant funding.
Thank you, Manager Sizemore. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And before you is the memorandum that the mayor did cover. I'm going to provide a brief summary for the public participants on the phone call. The city is a participant in Wayne County's Community Development Block Grant Program. Wayne County is currently an entitlement county, which means that they distribute funds to participating communities like our city through a formula grant application process. For the federal plan year of 2020, the city has been allocated $20,000 in CDVG funding. We would like to propose the following activities. $14,000 for senior services provided through the helm. $6,000 for transportation services provided through PACT. Wayne County has also continued the additional opportunity that started last year, which is where participating communities can jointly apply for larger projects that have a minimum value of $100,000. Each joint application will be granted by the county in a five-year cycle. The CDVG coordinators of Growth Point, Growth Point Farms, Growth Point Shores, Growth Point Woods, and Growth Point Park are recommending submitting the same joint application that was submitted last year. The aforementioned communities would like to submit a request of $400,000, which would be used to renovate the basement at the helm. This project would convert the basement into useful space for classrooms, storage, and a workshop. Design and engineering on the project would not begin until the project was awarded by Wayne County. We are anticipating that the project would likely be funded in year four or five of the funding cycle. The administration is recommending that the council authorize administration to submit the city's 2020 CDVG application for the $20,000 allocation and to proceed with the joint application with the other Growth Point communities to Wayne County. Those applications will then be included in the Wayne County Annual Action Plan, which is due to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by May 29th of this month. Thank you.
Thank you. I will put a motion on the floor to approve the recommended allocation of CDVG funds and the, and the, the proposed CDVG application letter support for the helm. I think that was Councilmember Hajes that supported. I have about three supports. I'll pick Councilmember Hajes.
Thank you.
Any, any discussion? Councilmember Grano?
I could be wrong on this. I thought under CDVG, we have to have a public hearing before we allocate the money. And we haven't had a public hearing. So don't we have to put this off till May 18th? Or am I wrong?
I'm not sure. That's a good question. Point of order.
I, I don't know the answer to that often. I would have to look at that.
Speaking from, sorry, if I can just make a point, I will investigate. Speaking from previous CDVG actions that I've worked on in the past, sometimes depending on the amount of money that is being requested, a public hearing is not required. It also depends on the type of activities that you are applying for. I can verify that if that is what the council would like and then we can provide follow-up information. But I do believe that we are in compliance with what is required for this current CDVG application based on the information that was provided by the county.
Can I make a, my own, can I make a public, or can I make a friendly amendment that we approve this? And if a public hearing is not, subject to a public hearing if necessary? Meaning that if we don't need one, we don't need to hold one. But if we do, that we obviously have to hold one.
Yeah, that makes sense.
One, one point.
If the second are also would accept that, Councilmember Hajes?
Yes, I accept that.
Okay, so we have, we have on the floor, any other discussion? This, by the way, is something that the Growth Points have banded together for quite some, quite some time on. There, there, there used to be a, you know, years and years ago, an attempt to spend some of the money specifically by each city as the numbers got to be smaller and smaller and the restrictions on how you spend block grant money got to be greater. It became obvious to us that the biggest impact we could have on the community was to support what was formerly called Services for Older Citizens, now called the Helm. to support what was formerly called Services for Older Citizens, now called the helm. Some communities have the kinds of services that the helm provides housed within city budgets of larger cities particularly. Smaller cities find it very difficult to provide adequate services. We're fortunate that the, that the helm exists to be supported by all the points so that these sorts of services can be provided to our seniors, including the open wheels and some of the programs they have. So with that comment, any other, any other comments? Call, City Manager Seisland.
Yes, Mayor Denner. I did just want to clarify real quick. You know, previously in my role as Assistant City Manager and Assistant Two with the City Growth Point Park, last year was the first year that the $20,000 allocation was changed. This was actually due to Wayne County not meeting HUD compliance for funding, or for spending those dollars. And so in the previous, you may recall several of our council members, Grano as well, you may, you know, there would be appropriation, I mean, funding for Mac Avenue sidewalks and others that would require a public hearing. However, now that those dollar amounts are much smaller, they do not require a public hearing. I just wanted to clarify, came to my head, this was a, because this is the second year of this new process for smaller dollar amounts to these communities because we, or the county did not reach compliance for spending.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. With that, Clerk Blahut, call the roll.
Councilmember Grano.
Yes.
Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Luet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Mayor Denner.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had a little internet blip. Yes. Has passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the temporary precinct relocation resolution. I'll ask the administration to introduce it. You have a memorandum from the city clerk before you describing what's required. You could provide a summary of that, or if the city manager would prefer to provide a summary, ask the administration to explain it to council.
Yes, Mayor Denner, thank you. So, real quick, I'll just make note that the, this is.
I'm sorry, City Manager, set the echo going again. Try again.
Can you hear me better now?
Perfect, perfect.
Okay. All right. So this is for the temporary relocation of precincts five and six for the August 4th primary election and November 3rd presidential election. The purpose for this, precincts five and six are currently located at Defer Elementary School. And, you know, as I said, August 4th and the November 3rd general election. The Growth Point Public School System has notified Clerk Blahut that the construction will be undertaken at this school, and it'll be, it'll require temporary relocation of these precincts. Clerk Blahut, do you have any other further comment regarding this?
All registered voters in precincts five and six will be sent a notice informing them. We're going to post it on our website, and there will be a notice in the Growth Point News informing them that for the August primary and the November presidential, that the location will be at the Lavins Gym for this year. That's it.
Okay. I, I move that we adopt this temporary location for precincts five and six. Support, support from Councilmember Reed. In discussion, I'll make one comment, and that is that the, the city clerk administration did quite a lot of study on what would be a suitable location for this. And one of the big requirements that we can satisfy at the gymnasium that is not able to be satisfied at many other places in the city other than the gymnasium and actually our Tompkins Center, is ADA accessible space for voting. Almost every place else that you think of as a space we might be able to utilize, whether it's a, another school or a private, a private site, say, is at one of the church halls or something, run into ADA compliance issues for purposes of elections. And so I give the administration high marks for figuring this out and recommending the Lavins Center. Councilmember Reed.
Just a quick question. Obviously, other than any activities that may be scheduled for the gym, will this relocation affect programming, the fitness center, anything else that's going on at the Lavins Center on election day?
I spoke with, you know, I spoke with Chad Craig and asked him if it would be okay, we're just going to cancel everything on those two days.
Including the, including the fitness center?
Well, you know, he didn't say anything about the fitness center, but there's going to be, especially in November, it's going to be a really busy election, and we're, there's going to be precincts five and six down there. So that can be discussed with him later. So at this point, it's all the other activities will be closed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have just a, just a clarification question. Can we change this forever? Do we need to have any elections in any schools? Can we use?
Yeah, let's, let me comment on that. I've been informed by, we wanted to do this a little bit at a time in the sense that we have to do it for this election.
Yes.
But the city clerk has informed me that they've, they've started a process to analyze how we might be able to relocate all the precincts into city-owned facilities, well along that analysis, but not quite ready to propose it to council for this election. I think that's, that's City Manager. You can just say.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great, because we were looking at City Hall, the library, Tompkins, and Lavins Gym are all ADA compliant, like you mentioned, and that's wonderful. Thank you. Look forward to talking more about that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Robson.
One thing I would, just looking down the road, would be concerned about, though, is these other places are ADA compliant, but take into consideration walkability, because now you're asking everybody in the fifth precinct to find their way all the way down to the Lavins Center, as opposed to being able to walk over to Defer by example. So I would ask the powers to be to take that into consideration going forward.
Sounds good. Thank you. Clerk Blahut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano.
Yes.
Councilmember Grano. Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Luet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes. Motion passes. Now we move on to the finance report. Councilmember for Finance, Hodges.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, all presented expenditures are in order and ready for consideration by the council.
Is there a motion?
I would move to present the invoices over $5,000 for acceptance by the city council for April of 2020.
Is there support?
Well, support.
Councilmember Reed, hand up first. We'll, we'll give his credit.
Excellent.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Grano.
Yes.
Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Luet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes. That brings us to new and old business, where members of the administration or council, if there's something else that you want to make us aware of or put on the tables for our future consideration, it's your turn. First, I'll go to the administration. You have anything to add?
I just wanted to reiterate to council again, I look forward to hearing your comments and your questions regarding the council conduct and rules plan, so I look forward to that.
Members of council, Councilmember Hodges.
Yes, I'm sorry to delay, Mr. Mayor. I know the meeting's gone late, but I think it's for the reason that I'm about to discuss. I'm troubled that these last few months continue to be painful, and I feel the polarization and division, I think as much as everybody else does on this council and in the community. And I think we're all even feeling the physical impacts of that and really wanting, I believe we all share a desire too, to really want to lead in the most effective way. And I know I have tremendous respect for each of my colleagues and the member, our members of the community as individuals, but for some reason, we're really all having difficulty working together. So I really don't think the problem is the art center or the budget or compliance. I think it more boils down to a loss of trust, some of which is warranted, some of which is not. But once we have it, I do think that will be our domino, and everything else will be, will fall into place. And I think the formula for trust is three-pronged. One, ethics. Two, competence. And three, voice. And if we can nail those three things, I think we're going to be much better positioned. And examples of ethics that I would like to ask we accelerate would be the formalization and acceptance of the Ethics Ordinance Agreement on our council rules. And I would like to suggest that we maybe even set aside a special meeting to address those, perhaps in the form of a retreat, so we can really talk together as a team about what our shared values are and how we're going to work together in a way that has mutual purpose and common ground, and items that should comprise a code of honor that we have for each other. So those would be two things right off the bat that I would suggest under the ethics category. And, you know, this has all been coming to mind to me over the last few hours, and we've all been faced with a lot of preparation for this meeting. So these are somewhat unformed, but hopefully you get the feeling. And on the category of competence, I think we really need to put a lot of belief in our staff team, and we need to request that they provide position papers on some of the important topics that we're facing, like business support, like the art center, like the DPW building, so we can hear from them about their vision and help to unite us toward it. I think too, given the crisis that we're facing right now, it would be wise to request a systematic and formalized approach to budget reviews so that we can make sure we're on top of the constantly changing landscape. And then if we could too weave in some priorities into the goals and objectives of not only our team as a council, but also to our staff team, and then tie that all to the budgeting process, that results in good management. And I think too, that we really may need to very seriously correct any errors that there might, that might have occurred in the past, so that we can remove any cancer that may or may not be there, so we can move forward from a clean slate. We need to commit to full compliance. I think it would be helpful if we assign some of us to work as a team and work in close partnership with the art center folks to try to reach more common ground there. And it would be helpful too if we funded some additional planning expertise to help us navigate some of the complex projects that we're dealing with. All of these things would allow us to be managing for success and creating accountability. And then on the third very important prong of that formula, the voice, we have our master planning process coming up, where we need to give our community strong voice in that. We need to be very clear about working closely with our business community so that we can support them and be more sensitive to the needs of community engagement. And part of that solution could fall in some sort of state-of-the-city approach where it's interactive and our leadership is working in tandem with our community members to develop a future for our community, and then being sensitive to some of the appointments to boards and commissions, commissions going forward that are very strategic and very collaborative. I had a chance to work with Judge Keith, Damon J. Keith, a lot, and he says democracy, or said, "Democracy dies behind closed doors." And I think that those are really important words of wisdom. And once we put all this to bed, we'll have our trust and we'll have a real team that works together in a respectful and very honorable way, and then we can all be voting for us, all of us. So before I can feel confident voting on some of the really important things that are coming up, I think it's important to start looking at these things. And I realize I just dumped a lot on you all, and would be happy to put some of this into writing, so we at least know the ball is in the air. We're not going to change everything overnight, but we are in transition from one staff to another, from one council to another, so we're going to have to be flexible and we're going to have to compromise. But I hope this at least provides us with some sort of starting point to really, really creating the team that we need to be and that our community expects us to be.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hodges. I'd, I'd ask you, as you suggested you would do, perhaps put some of the key points in a, in written form, addressed to the city manager and, and me for future follow-up, so that it's not lost, and.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else in old and new business? Councilmember Rayland.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up the art center in new business. One thing I want to mention is that I did, for the fourth month in a row, ask for it to be put on the agenda, and I did not even get a reply that it wasn't going to be on the agenda. The previous month, I got an email from Nick telling me that, two months ago, I got a phone call from you telling me why it wasn't going to be on, giving me details of the background of the art center. And then four months before that, I didn't get a reply either. We're going to be talking about the rules of meetings next week. You guys mentioned the agenda setting is still going to be set by you and Nick, Mayor and the city manager. I think you guys can handle that power if you're not going to reply to us in a, in a timely manner.
Well, I think, you know, the, the agenda setting that's proposed, and we'll discuss this in the rules, you know, provides avenues to deal with.
Back to the art center then. The parking plan that.
I will, I will, I'm sorry.
The parking plan that is mentioned on the, the ad for the art center on the website is, is incorrect as well. Dale mentioned today that the parking plan is still in progress. There's no official parking plan for the art center, even though it says that. Councilmember Luet replied to you with two or three things that you said you were going to adjust on that ad for the art center that haven't been adjusted in over a month now. We still don't have proof of the $15 million that they said they had. We've asked for this for months now, and after COVID-19, I don't think that anyone's going to have those, those funds. They haven't filed their financials in over a year. There's no site plan, there's no business plan, and now that the, the whole project is delayed because Planning Commission isn't meeting until December. So how can they present to the city in the summer when there's no Planning Commission planned until December? The chair said there's no meeting scheduled until December. So I still would like to talk, to talk about it as a council to move forward. It's one of the cancers we've been having in the city.
A couple of points of clarification on your, on your comments, sort of starting at the end first. The, the statement about the Planning Commission scheduled meetings is correct, but it's anticipated that meetings will be scheduled both for public review of the DPW site plan and also for public review of the proposed art center, site plan and operating plan, and that those will be scheduled as soon as the, the teams which are supporting those projects are ready to present. So the, the expectation that, that there will be meetings this summer on that is, should be, should be clear to everybody. The point, the point on the art center, I apologize if I didn't get back to you about the, about the budget, everything that was going on. I kind of lost track of that, and I apologize for that. I should have replied to you. On the other hand, you and I did have an extensive conversation about what was posted and so on, and you promised that you were going to continue to engage in the discussion and give me written, written comments about specifics that could, you know, that you questioned that are in the city posting, and I've, I've not received that in the many weeks since we had that discussion. And then finally, the, the comment about the, the comments from Councilmember Luet, they have, I understand, been finally posted. There was, again, with everything going on, that was a, an administrative fall through the cracks problem that I didn't realize had occurred, and, and we all lost track of it in the, in the heat of everything else that we were working on. That was corrected today. City manager can confirm that.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so I apologize for that, but we did get that up to speed. So that's just some clarification on those points. Any, any other new and old business?
Still, I'm still continuing. I'm sorry. So you did mention that the art center hasn't gone through the proper process of the Planning Commission yet, and yet it's a city-approved project. I'm wondering if anyone else on council has a problem with us approving a project which we didn't vote on together. Mayor, you, you told us in a, in that phone call that.
The city has not, to be clear, the city has, to be clear, the city has not approved the project until.
On our website without pushing it past us first.
The, to be clear, the, the project is not considered approved by the city until.
But it's on city letterhead.
On city letterhead on the website.
And for three, for two months, we've been asking you to modify this, and you won't. And that, that's disgusting, that you won't address it, sitting around thinking it's okay to do this. There's no trust for this project at all.
I look forward to your written comments.
I'm going to do it publicly. This is a public project approved by you.
Thank you, Mayor. I keep hearing about these concerns about information of, of the art center on the city website. I think it's important to have that information on the city website. It's called transparency.
Have you seen?
It's called, it's called.
It's called, it's called information.
Any financials from this?
I'm sorry. Point, point, point of order. We're, we're, let's not engage in two and, two and fro here in the new and old business. It's, it's inappropriate and it's out of order. So let's move on to the next comment from council.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you. Just, I wanted to address, because I know there's still quite a few residents in this Zoom meeting that we received many emails. And I, I think all of the emails that I received from residents were sent to all of council. Some, some also included city administration. I have heard from some residents while we're in this meeting that, who were disappointed that their comments weren't read, that they were sent to the city manager and the city finance clerk. So I think we need to really define that process for our residents. But I also want to say that overwhelmingly, like four to one, our residents emailed and I responded to every single one of them. They asked us to pause the capital improvement projects until we get a handle on the post-COVID epidemic realities. And so I'm again encouraging administration and my colleagues to be very mindful of that. Then one other comment, and this is for the city manager. You mentioned the proposals you received for the master plan. And I'm curious if we put out RFPs for those proposals? Do we have a process for obtaining bids like that? Because I've never been aware of it. And I think that's important as well that we know that there's a, a fair and transparent process when we are seeking experts and bid work. So, thank you.
Yeah. So I can comment on that council member read and I appreciate the call. So I think it was in, correct me if I'm wrong, what was it? December or January that there was the vote for the master plan? And the council decided to deny the master plan to have it professionally revised. And so being my first time looking into how do we go about this process in revising master plans? I reached out to the Gross Point city manager, his name is Peter Dame for those. And he's somebody that I've been able to reach on and, you know, about this process. And he informed me and through Michigan Municipal League, they actually advertised what's called state my deal. So that is like government contracts and, you know, other, you know, contractors that cities can also get the preferred rates as do the state. And so that's where I, I reached out to, they actually have a section regarding professional master plan consultants. Reached out to those folks, interviewed them, even had Zoom interviews because of COVID. And that's why we were able and in my report to get my finalized version. So did we do a RFP? No. But we, this is the process that we did take for it. And I feel very confident. And I hope the city council will too, in the three proposals you'll have presented to you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Flew.
I didn't have any intention of talking about the art center, but since council member Relon was not allowed to talk about it, I'll go back to it. And he was, he got to talk about it slightly more tonight than he did last week when he was just told that, no, we were not discussing it. I don't think that's an appropriate response. I'm glad that some of the changes that we talked about were made to the information that's on the city website. But I don't think it's appropriate, I'll say it again, for a project that has so many details remaining, that has not been approved by the city, that to have so much speculative information in the document that's on the city website. Because when you talk about it's going to be beneficial to the neighborhood, it's going to provide different kinds of programming, it's going to be, all, all the things that are on the website that, that sound really good and sound pretty and sound interesting. It's not providing transparency because our residents do not understand what this facility is going to be. The, the emails that I get from residents talking about the art center show clearly they're misunderstanding what this facility is going to be. So if you want transparency, I would say, take out all the pretty words in those documents and be very clear about what is actually planned. Now, again, I think those documents should come down until the city has actually approved the facility and we have a site plan and we've approved an architect and a design and it's gone to planning commission. Then we can start, start talking about how exciting it is and what a great addition it will be to the city. But when we don't, we don't even have the funding yet. I will agree with council member Relon that that's, it's inappropriate.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Grano.
First, I pat ourselves on the back a little bit for passing a budget. I think it's important. I want to thank the city employees. Kind of forget about them a lot. They've, especially the ones that are furloughed, that I just want them to know that I stand with them and that I hope that we can be in a position where they can be back to work as soon as possible and we can do right by them. Secondly, as it was pointed out in the meeting, a public works meeting will be scheduled, public service commission, committee and ordinance review. I think we're going to have a meeting. I need to talk to Jake, but it's my understanding that the council is going to be meeting next Monday. So I hope to be in touch with my committee members between now and then, so that we can have that scheduled, so we can announce that next Monday. I'm probably looking early June for those, depending on the plan, but just so the public knows. Nothing's on the calendar yet, but we will be trying to get those two committees scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grano. You, you mentioned the meeting next Monday. In the next couple of days, I'll work with the city administration to put an agenda together for, for that. And you should be getting that in the next couple of days. But still plan on, on getting together Monday night, the 18th. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Robson.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of follow up to the councilman Grano. I want to thank and commend the outstanding leadership through this pandemic from the mayor, council members, city manager, assistant city manager, finance director. And absolutely our employees, our police officers, our public safety officers under very difficult conditions. They've done an outstanding job, but I want to extend my thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Let's close off new and old business and move on to a public comment. First, are there any written public?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. I do have several written public comments that I'll review. This comment comes from Pat Chesterton. Hello, city council. Please accept my comments. I urge you to delay action on the development plans for the DPW, parking lots and other new investment. The risks posed long-term in this economic crisis remain unknown and many of the current assumptions will be inaccurate as well. There are no benefits to be gained by hurrying and the risks of requiring cuts to other needed budget items like public safety parks and collection too great, are too great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Oh, this is from Pete Z. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am a longtime GP Park resident that just finally got fed up with all the complaints that seemed to mean nothing but just noise to the rest of us that appreciate the city. The park is by far one of the nicest communities and has the best activities in the area, including the library, the movie theaters, hopefully a soon-to-come art center, and not to mention the nicest parks. I'd like to know why you are not focusing and supporting the areas that need to be improved, like the DPW yard? And why is the council is not acting against the closing of Trombley? Go ahead and bicker among yourselves and let it close. Really? The school is targeted to be closed in an area when the government is talking about social distancing. The kids are going to be cramped into a school that's already crowded. And we have yet to see a good transition plan for the students. And they plan to address the traffic in the mornings and how busier it'll get. Please step up and do something rather than fight with each other. The city loses. A disappointed resident and parent. This message comes from Larry Coles. The council needs to hear that many residents are very unhappy, are very happy with the vibrant and walkable business districts we have and want to continue that progress. The few vocal opponents have done nothing for the city, are then going to create dysfunction in the community and bad mouth Dale. And the present DPW building is a health and safety hazard for employees. And that voting against something that councils already vote in favor of will put the city in grave legal jeopardy. I am asking that the council not to cave, to pressure, to nothing more than whining by very few people. Kimberly Berger, council members. I am writing regarding the upcoming vote on the proposed art center to vote, to urge you to vote no, or at least delay the project at this time. Don't get me wrong, I support the idea of an art center if it is appropriately funded by donors and presents a net zero liability to the city. My daughter is involved with the Gross Point Theater and it would be ideal to find that organization a new home to showcase their productions. However, we are seeing unprecedented economic losses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And it would be financially irresponsible to continue with any proposed capital project, which may place unknown financial burdens on the back of taxpayers in the city, given the looming economics uncertainties. First, while the donors have generously pledged to raise 25 million supportive in art center, they are not even close to raising that amount yet. Should they fail in their efforts to raise the pledged amount, the city will be on the hook. The prospect of failing to raise the pledged amount is all the more likely, given the current economic downturn. Second, I have seen no study, RFP, et cetera, which gives us any idea how much it will actually cost to build the art center. If indeed donors do raise 25 million, if the overall cost of the proposed art center exceeds that amount, again, the taxpayers in the city will be responsible for making up the difference in a period where the city is already likely to have suffered decreased funding and a decreased budget due to overall economic losses in the state and country. Finally, there will be operating costs associated with the art center that the city will have to pay. Again, there has been no study showing that the art center will make enough money to cover those operating costs. Just general statements to that effect. And again, if the art center is unable to cover its own costs, who will be paying them? The city. I'm not willing to forego police, fire and other essential services so the city can pay the art center's operating costs. I would love to see this project move forward. However, it must only be undertaken if the liability to the city is net zero. And at this point, there is no guarantee of that. In fact, it has not really been studied enough in any detail to even make that determination. Thus, I urge you to vote no on the art center at this time unless and until the donors guarantee, guaranteed to provide enough money to provide the entire, entire cost of construction, whatever that might be. And any additional costs associated with the operating costs, which art center is unable to cover on its own. And that's, oh, that was Mr. Donnelly's. And with that, that, that concludes my public comment of submittals. I'll ask Assistant to the City Manager Smith if there's any in the queue for calling in.
Thank you, Manager Tysland. Yes, I do have one written comment. I'm going to pull up the timer. And then I will call on Mr. Kolar when I have you unmuted. Give me one second. Okay, Mr. Kolar, please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment, you know, I struggle with this when I, early in the conversation, when our city attorney, both of them, our prior and current, were talking about Public Act 57 and stating repeatedly that it's clear, it's clear, it's clear. I was on the DDA and TIPA calls earlier today. And they repeatedly said on those calls that the Public Act 57 was not clear. And so I'm just consistently confused by the counsel that they give, which we pay $10,000 a month for on a retainer, when they continue to make statements from both sides of their mouths. Now, the question I have, and this was something that I wrote down earlier in the conversation today. We have a clear discrepancy between what our director of our DDA and TIPA have stated and what a council member has stated. So my question to you, Mayor, are you willing, without me having to go through or another citizen go through the FOIA process, have the director of the DDA and TIPA release the name of the businesses that he is asserting and claiming he spoke to?
Kind of, it kind of went quiet on my end.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Leah, either.
Still can't hear you, Leah.
One moment, Mayor, while we figure out some technical difficulties in a sec.
Hello? Hello? Okay, sorry. So the next phone number is the phone number ending in 4516. If you would like to go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Martin. I'm a resident on Middlesex. Four months ago in January, a couple of the residents and I complained to the council of some pretty atrocious behavior by the city attorney at the time, Dennis Lavasser. The following month in February, in, in response to the complaints, Mayor Denner said that a code of conduct for city employees, contractors and the council will be presented to the council the following month in March. Nothing was presented at the March meeting. Nothing was presented at the April meeting. Nothing, as far as I can tell, was presented at today's meeting. A code of conduct has never come up at these meetings. I would like to know the status of a code of conduct and why it hasn't been made more of a priority. And please don't tell me that the COVID crisis has slowed this down. COVID sure hasn't slowed down anything related to DDA or to TIPA. Second, I would like to know how much longer Dennis Lavasser will be doing legal work for the city. We've been told that he is being phased out, which to me means a steady reduction in his work over time. But I learned today that he was actually given new responsibilities during today's DDA and TIPA meetings by Dale Craniac. Specifically, he was tasked with working on the DDA and TIPA's response to COVID-19. When is his work going to end? He did some pretty terrible things to park residents and it baffles me why he is still doing work for the city. And last, I wanted to mention that I emailed all these questions to the mayor several weeks ago and received absolutely no response. The mayor and some of his appointees have demonstrated a clear pattern of ignoring people when they pose challenging questions. I've spoken with other residents and council members, including members of the current council, who said that they've experienced similar communication dysfunction with this mayor and it needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Denner, I don't have any other public comments, although I do have a question about how these public comments are going to be responded to. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the.
So what I said was, I don't have anyone else in the queue for public comment. I do have a question from one of the participants about how answers to some of the questions posed during the public comment process are going to be addressed.
Well, we're going to refer all, all public comments to administration to go through to initiate appropriate action, whether it be within the administration or requests of members of council. So it starts, it starts with the administration. Thanks. With that.
One quick thing.
One quick thing.
Yeah, I promise.
Councilmember Relon.
It'll be nice. I'm wondering, since we started recording these meetings, a lot of residents were wondering when we're going to post them. And seeing how these are so long, I know a lot of people wanted to stay through the whole thing, but they weren't able to. And I applaud all of us for dealing with a lot of, a lot of this important information. But I'm wondering when we plan to post these meetings? And if, just to let them know, and if there's a plan online to, to share these. Thank you.
Hi, Vicos. This is Nick. So just to discuss, I know, I don't know if it was yesterday, two days ago, it seems like days have been a little fuzzy lately. But I am looking, I talked with Jake Hollitt and we're going to discuss if there's any appropriate action for when those need to be submitted, once they're recorded. Otherwise, Otherwise, if I get an answer that we can go ahead, we'll submit those and put those right on the agenda section of the website and put recording right there. So give me a second and we'll definitely get back to you on that as soon as possible.
Cool, thank you.
Okay. With that, and public comment being over, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody, Councilmember Reed, I can't hear you.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay. Support by.
Grano.
Grano. Let's call the roll.
Yes.
Relon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Rapsen?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Night, thanks, everybody.